Agenda, I mean, call the roll. Thank you.
And just a reminder to counsel, please indicate your location when I read your name. Councilmember Wilcox.
Present in Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Present in Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present in Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Richardson.
Present in Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present, driving through Delaware County, Indiana.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present, attending virtually from the city of Ypsilanti, County of Washtenaw, Michigan.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Present, city of Ypsilanti County of Washtenaw.
With all present Thursday, quorum.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
I heard two ayes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So the agenda will stand approved as written. Okay.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is a FOIA appeal from 6:30 to 7:00 PM. And Mayor, if it's okay with you, we'll turn it over to the city attorney, John Barr.
That is perfectly fine with me. Thank you.
Mr. Barr, you're muted.
Yes, thank you. And good evening, city council. Thank you for agreeing tonight, a little early to hear this FOIA appeal. I'd like to briefly explain a little bit about FOIA, then the FOIA appeal, the process. Then what we will do is, the appellate has decided not to attend or can't attend, but the clerk has a statement from him. We'll have that read. I'll give a little background. Then I'll tell you what the city position is. We'll have the police chief talk, and then you can consider the matter. And there's a resolution prepared that you can either take one or two items. You can either approve the appeal, or you can deny the appeal. With the Freedom of Information Act, I'm sure you're all quite familiar with it, but let me summarize it, that in the 1970s, it swept across the country, an idea that the public should be able to look into the inner workings of government. The sun should shine in, and the ordinary citizen should be able to find out what's happening in the government. And so there were a number of laws passed, and the Michigan legislature passed the Freedom of Information Act. And what that act says is if the citizen gives a request to a government agency, then the government agency has to give any documents that are requested, unless there's some exemption for those documents. In this particular case, the appellant is the grandfather, I believe, of a young woman that was found deceased in one of the Eastern Michigan University residence halls. And the police department created an investigation, started a homicide investigation. I understand that this is a little less than 10 years ago. The investigation is still progressing. So what happens is I am the city FOIA Freedom of Information Act request coordinator.
Excuse me, Mr. Barr. Could I ask everyone to mute? I'm hearing some background noises. If they would, please, thank you.
So the city has a policy on getting FOIAs, and some of them go to the departments, and if it's a usual matter, the department can have discretion to release or not release. However, usually if it's not released, my office is contacted, or if it's any kind of unusual request, it goes through this office. And I am the coordinator, and Jennifer Healy Merritt is the deputy coordinator. And I sent out with the agenda, a packet of materials, and you'll see her name throughout the documents, in signing the different documents for the city. So in this particular case, the appellant filed three requests for information from the city. And I'd like to start out and say that the Freedom of Information Act does not require that the city make any new record or answer any questions, but it's only to get access to existing records. And so there were three requests. One was in February 19th of this year, and the request was for an update on the murder case. And that request was denied because it did not ask for a specific record, and there was no specific record. And also, it's an ongoing case. And there's an exception for ongoing cases, that the request can be denied if the request would be injurious or detrimental to the investigation. Then there was a second request made in February 25th of this year by the same person. And the request was for a press release issued by the city of Ypsilanti Police Department in around 2015. That request again was denied because there is no such press release, and it would have been an ongoing investigation. And then in March 12 of 2021, there was another request, and that was a request that asked a number of questions. Who was involved? What are they doing? And a lot of different other things. And again, that request was denied because there was no such record. The city does not have to create a new record, and again, there is an ongoing investigation. So that is a summary of the facts as we have them now. And the way this will proceed, if you agree, is the next thing will be the city clerk, Mr. Hilinga, will read a statement of the appellant. And then after that statement, I will give a response. The police chief can give a response if he wishes. And then it will go to city council to consider whether or not the city was justified in refusing these requests based on the exemptions in the statute. So now, Mr. Hilinga, if you would, please present what the appellant has sent to you.
Good evening, counsel. I received this email around 3:00 PM today from Jim Niswonder. "I will not be able to attend as I have other commitments, sorry. My granddaughter Julia Niswonder was a student at EMU and was murdered in December 2012. The YPD will no longer communicate with me or the news media. They have refused to release any press release or updates on her case. This, to me, does not seem logical. The only person the YPD will talk to is my daughter Kimberly Julia's mother, even though they have asked her for a formal statement many times, and she has refused to do so. Kimberly very seldom communicates with YPD, and if she does, she does not share the information with me. Kimberly's ex-husband, Julia's stepfather, was said to be a person of interest by YPD. He too has refused to give a formal statement to YPD. I was Julia's legal guardian for the first 11 years of her life. So as you can imagine, the last few years have been very frustrating for me. I have used other sources and obtained most of the information I had requested. I do not know why I was denied copies of any and all press releases done by YPD. This is my only outstanding issue. Thanks for listening. I will continue my research to possibly help solve her murder. I do not understand that after so many years, additional assistance has not been attempted." Justice for Julia, Jim Niswonder.
All right, thank you, Clerk Hilinga. For the city response, I'd like to say that for FOIA, it does not matter who is asking for the information, or why they're asking for it. The law is very clear that if a request is made for a document in the public realm in the city, it has to be released unless there is an exception. And in this case, I've mentioned that in all these cases, there were two exceptions. One, there was no document, and two, there's a continuing police investigation, and the release of the information would be detrimental. So the way that our office works is when we get a FOIA request, I look at it, and I look at the law, and I determine whether or not there is an exception or an exemption, whether or not the release can be given. And in a case like this, when the police department are involved in it, we don't know what the situation is, if it's going to be detrimental or not. So we rely on the police and their investigation and their response to whether or not the information should be released. So at this time, I'd like, I think Chief Tony is here. Police Chief Tony, if you would give a response as to what the position of the police department is, please.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor. Members of city council. So there are some inaccuracies in what Mr. Niswonder relayed in his statement, and I'll get to those later. But I want to key in on what he's talking about in regards to only speaking to Julia's mother, Kim. There had been a lot of inter-family quarreling going on between different factions of the family. In fact, in 2019, I believe it was, even Representative Peterson became involved, and we had a meeting at the police department with about 15 of Julia's family members, and it was decided at that meeting that Julia's mother would be the point contact for the family. And that's one of the reasons why we're only speaking to Julia. We gave Representative Peterson our word that that's what we would do, and that's what we've been doing. So in regards to the case in itself, it's not that the YPD hasn't requested or used assistance from other agencies. In fact, we have gotten assistance from Homeland Security, Interpol, Michigan State Police Crime Lab, the Michigan State Police Criminal Investigation Division, the FBI, the FBI Profiling Team, the FBI Crime Lab. We've reached out and have been working with many different agencies and many different aspects of this case. And although it has been going on since December of 2012, which even predates my coming to Ypsilanti, this is still an active case. We're still developing information. We're still reexamining some evidence. There have been some advances in technology in regards to what you can get from electronic devices, as well as DNA advancements in technology. So all those things are still making an active case. As far as press releases, to my knowledge, outside of the very first one, when the incident first happened, there have not been any press releases for this case. And part of the reason is, is that a lot of this information is very sensitive. There are literally hundreds of pieces of personal information for people that have been subjected to DNA testing as part of this investigation. And the release of some of those things, so those personal information, could be damaging to people who, quite frankly, are innocent, but are, you know, were at one point a focus of an investigation. So in fairness to those people, those documents would need to be redacted, and that would be a heavy burden on the police department to actually do that. And last but not least, as far as putting the case in jeopardy, you heard Mr. Niswonder saying in a statement that he was going to continue doing research. That's part of the problem. When he was receiving information, he was reaching out to different agencies and different companies that do some different kinds of familial DNA testing, and was putting them in contact with the crime lab. He was basically interjecting himself in the middle of the investigation. And I understand his angst, I really do, and I empathize with that. But if he gets information, he becomes part of the flow of that information, and it's incumbent on people to follow up on those things. And quite frankly, he doesn't understand the evidence. So he's pointing people in the direction, and these are for-profit companies, by the way, pointing people in the direction of the crime lab where it's not appropriate. So I can tell you that Detective Kopic has this case sitting on a table right behind her, and she touches it almost every single day. This is not a cold case. Mr. Niswonder has said on some podcasts that I listened to him talk about, this is a cold case and should be turned over to somebody else. This is not the case. This is an active case, and we're working on it. And any release of information would be detrimental to furthering this case. So in closing, again, I empathize with Mr. Niswonder. It's a terrible thing to have something like this happen to your family member, but in good conscience, we can't release the information that he wants. And quite frankly, the update, if we're going to forward information, we're going to give to Julia's mother, as we agreed, and she would disseminate it to the family. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question for the chief.
Okay.
This is a simple question. I just want to, so while there's a pending investigation, there's no way for FOIA documents to be released. Is that correct?
Not if it's going to be detrimental to the investigation.
So a person can get certain FOIA information if it's deemed not detrimental to the investigation?
I'm going to have to qualify with the yes, maybe. So stance normally in an open case is that we will release some things if it helps with the investigation, like if we have a photograph of someone who's a suspect, and we don't know who they are, and we think that maybe we can get some help from the public. We may release that through the media to see if we can get some tips on that. So if we can use the release of the information to forward the investigation, we will. But other than that, we keep the information pretty close to the vest.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Let me once more say that it does not depend on who's asking for the information, or what the purpose of it is. If it's subject to the FOIA, then we have to release it. But if it's not subject to the FOIA, then we do not release it. And in this particular case, there were two exemptions. One, the records asked for did not exist, and they would be detrimental to the investigation. So at this time, the matter goes to city council. You should consider it, ask questions if you wish, debate it. And then I'd like to conclude the matter with a resolution to either approve the appeal or deny the appeal. And Clerk Hilinga has a resolution prepared to that effect.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wilcox, and I saw your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I went back and looked at a lot of the news stories from this time and over, and since then, and was trying to figure out what the press release was about. And I saw a report from a local news agency that had a clip that was highlighted, that it had come from the city of Ypsilanti, and I'm not sure if it was part of an email or something like that, but I'm wondering if that's what he's referring to for the press release. Because I did see that story, and it kind of made sense to me, but that's neither here nor there. If it didn't exist as a document, which it seems like on all three occasions, there really wasn't a document that was specifically requested. That wasn't really a question. That was just a comment.
Okay, that's fine. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, yes.
Oh yeah, I just, I appreciate the background. It was kind of hard to fully understand everything before this conversation. So I appreciate getting that background from both of you.
Thank you. Any other one else from counsel? Or any one question or comment?
I just have one more further question. You can't see my hand. I'm not, I'm trying my best not to push buttons while I'm driving.
That's okay. I don't want you to.
So when I say through the media, does Eastern Michigan's newspaper count? Like, or is it talking about the media in live? What media are we talking about? Facebook? Like, which forms of media? I just want, I just want for a point of clarity, did East?
Well, Councilmember Morgan, the request was for a press release from the city of Ypsilanti Police Department.
Okay.
And the chief has indicated that to his knowledge, there are no press releases. Now, there was a lot in the newspapers about it, I guess. That's public knowledge. People can get that, but I don't think those are in the possession of the police department.
Just one more point, just one more point of clarity. The incident actually happened in the Peninsula Place Apartments. It wasn't in campus housing.
Thank you, chief.
Well, Eastern came up, and I just wanted to make sure that we had that clear.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, Mr. Hilinga, would you read the resolution, please?
Counsel, resolution number 2021-050. It is resolved by the council, the city of Ypsilanti, that after hearing the presentation, and considering the FOIA requests, and the denial notices, and considering the FOIA Act and the facts and circumstances of the matter, it is hereby resolved that pick one, the FOIA appeal of James Niswonder is granted, and any non-exempt material in response to the FOIA requests shall be furnished the appellant, or the FOIA appeal of James Niswonder is denied.
I've moved to deny.
It's been moved and supported to deny the appeal. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Clerk Hilinga. Just one more thing for counsel. I'd like the record of this meeting to show that all of the documents that the council received in the agenda packet were sent to the appellant with notice of the meeting before this matter came on.
Thank you.
And. Thank you, Attorney.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The agenda does read the FOIA appeal will last from 6:30 to 7:00 PM. So I would suggest that the meeting recess for eight minutes until 7:00 PM.
Let it be so. Thank you. All right, meeting, call the meeting to order, please.
With the meeting reconvened, the next section is public comments. I've received two comments via email. If it's okay with counsel, I'll read those first, and then I will go into the attendees list.
Okay, Mr. Hilinga, before you do that, could we please entertain the motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock this evening? Somerville.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to extend our meeting until 11 o'clock PM.
It's been moved and supported to extend till 11. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion passes. All right, thank you. Mr. Hilinga, please continue on.
Okay, counsel, I received an email from Mr. Yap today indicating that he would not be able to attend. So I'll go ahead and read that now. I will set the timer for three minutes. Hello again, Larry Yap, owner of 32, 34, 36, 40, and 42 North Huron Street. On behalf of owners and tenants attempting to use the North Huron Alley, some may feel the North Huron Alley obstructions are an old problem, so they can be ignored. The Jackson Cleaners balcony was not old when I first reported the violation to the city. Any oldness is because the city didn't issue a citation at the time. They were notified of the violation, but here we are, and the code and easement violations are still causing problems. Many of you may not have the 1959 dedication of the alley to the city. Quick claim to the said city of Ypsilanti to be accepted and used by the city, the said city of Ypsilanti for public alley. I know you are aware of the city code of ordinances, but I am repeating several sections for the record. Section 94-254, no person shall block, barricade, or obstruct an alley within the city except as otherwise provided in this code, 1996. You are also aware the city code prohibits staff from allowing obstructions in the alley. Section 9482, it shall be unlawful for any persons to allow any encroachment onto or into any city right of way, except as provided by this code. We are again asking the city enforce its ordinances and return the public alley to be available for the use of the public. Second email, because the ordinance officer and other city staff refuse to address blatant violations, I am sending notice of new violations directly to city council. These pictures are taken today. The owner appeared to want to continue to cause trouble for others by interfering with their legal use of public property. The property line is clearly marked in gray. The stone sign pot and railroad ties have been moved into the city alley. And on another issue, each time a vehicle parks in the alley, it shuts down the alley, preventing people from leaving or entering their apartments or businesses. There are numerous instances where people are late to work because the alley is blocked, and the driver cannot be located. I had previously requested no parking, no standing signs be placed in the alley. Someone at the city hall has blocked discussion on that request, and counsel was forwarded photographs provided in the email.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Now, opening it up to anyone in the attendees list, if you'd like to make comment, you will have three minutes. Please raise your hand, and I will allow you to speak. Just so the attendees list is aware, there are two public hearings. One regarding an alley vacation, South Washington Street, South Huron Street, and then approving an application for a Michigan Department of Natural Resources trust. So if you have any comment, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed to speak.
Andrew, you said you had two comments via email?
Yes, I read both. I said second.
Sorry.
It does not appear that anyone has raised their hand. So if counsel would like, we can move on to the presentation section.
Please do. Thank you.
The first item in that section is a proclamation sponsored by Mayor Richardson. Equal payday, and I will read it now. Whereas 47 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, year-round full-time working women in 2010 earned only 77% of earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which amends Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, and now we must pass the Paychecks Fairness Act, which amends the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the laws effectiveness. And whereas wage disparity persists across all educational levels and in all states, as women with a college degree or higher lose 713,000 over a 40-year period versus a 270,000 loss for women who did not finish high school. And whereas there were 68 million women in the workforce in 2008, a significant increase from the 18.4 million in 1950, and women were 46.8% of the labor force in 2010. And whereas, over a working lifetime, this wage disparity costs the American, the average American woman and her family, an estimated $700,000 to $2 million in lost wages, impacting social security benefits and pensions. And whereas, fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas, fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas, Wednesday, March 24, 2021, symbolizes the time in the year wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, I, Lois Allen Richardson, mayor of the city of Ypsilanti, hereby proclaim March 24, 2021, as equal payday in the city of Ypsilanti.
Thank you. I don't know if any of the women, or even the gentlemen on the better panelists, if you would like to comment on the proclamation. Yes.
Just.
Simmons.
Oh, thank you so much for getting that on the agenda. Well-stated, and I appreciate it. It's an important issue. it. So important issue, uh, that has, uh, you know, lingering effects and a cascading effect on on women's lives throughout their careers. So important stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I just have a comment.
Okay. Could you hold on a second, Mr. Wilcoxen had his hand up?
Sorry about that.
That's right.
No.
I'll defer.
Okay, Mr. Morgan.
I just want to say that's a great thing for women. I think it's been past time that women get equal pay and it's probably a little bit more for the service that they have to the humanity. So I'm totally supportive of this. Thank you for bringing this up, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Wilcoxen?
This is just crazy. I mean, it's crazy that we're in the twenty-first century and this is still a problem. So thank you for bringing it up.
You're welcome. Um, I would just like to, you know, ask that, um, if each one of us, whenever we have the opportunity to bring it forth, to bring it forth, because it goes, you know, almost most of the year without anyone, uh, speaking of it or thinking about it, but and the only way it's going to get changed or get some attention is that if people that are aware of it, speak about it so that we can try to bring about a change. And as you said, Mr. Wilcoxen, it's crazy. Then twenty-first century, women make seventy-seven cents on the dollar, and I believe that's for white women and not and black women and women of other women of color make even less on the dollar that a man makes. So anyway, thank you all for the support. Your hand up, Mr. Wilcoxen?
Yeah, as a manager for the company I work for, I'm very aware of this. I have I have, uh, two female employees and a male employee and and the administration with within the company, um, isn't it's not really aware of this. And so bringing it to their attention and, you know, highlighting the disparities, it's it's strange that there's there's that much resistance and just not like it seems like a no-brainer to me, but but I personally experienced trying to advance this agenda and and getting stonewalled on.
Yeah. Men and women have been getting stonewalled on that same on this same subject for years. So, yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Holanga. Next item?
Council, the next item on the agenda is triple triple ATA's service restoration proposal. Um, there are a number of individuals here to speak towards that. Um, and if council permits, I'll I'll turn it over to, um, Jesse Miller to, uh, provide the introduction, and I have, uh, provided Ken Anderson, uh, permission to share, uh, their screens. So if they'd like to do so now, they're they are able.
All right, thank you. Mr. Miller?
Uh, thank you very much for allowing us time on your agenda today. I'm Jesse Miller, your appointee to the Triple ATA Board of Directors. As a board, we've been providing oversight of the staff of TripleATA to ensure that the agency's goals are being met throughout this pandemic. And these goals include equitable access to the transit system, positively impacting the region's economic vitality, and effective use of agency resources. This has not been easy, and there have been a number of changes as we have gone along in order to ensure that these goals are being met. In fact, uh, tomorrow, there will be another announcement regarding a partnership between the ride and the Washtenaw County Health Department to provide transportation to vaccine appointments at the EMU Convocation Center. Now, if at any time, uh, anyone on council would like to talk about the agency's goals, I would strongly encourage you to reach out to me for a conversation. Uh, but today, I'm pleased to be introducing the agency's staff for the presentation of the service recovery proposal for later this year. Uh, the agency staff joining us today are Matt Carpenter, C. E. O., Forrest Yang, Deputy C. E. O. for Planning and Innovation, Chris Simmons, spokesperson, and leading our presentation today is Ken Anderson, the agency's lead planner. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Ken for the presentation.
Thank you, Jesse. I hope everybody can hear me. Mayor Richardson and members of city council, thank you for inviting us.
Thanks for coming.
So I'm going to start now. Beginning August twenty-ninth, the ride is planning to restore bus service to pre-pandemic hours and frequencies. The majority of service in the Ann Arbor area will be restored to these frequencies, hours, and on-street routing. We're going to get to those routes in a few moments, but first we'll focus on routes that travel from Ypsilanti to Ann Arbor. After the presentation's done, we can open up the Florida questions. Uh, if there are any questions about routes on the end on the Ann Arbor side of the system, we can also take those questions at that time. But I'm, uh, just for the sake of time, I'm not going to walk through all the details of all the Ann Arbor routes. So first, we're going to start with the Ann Arbor with the Ypsilanti to Ann Arbor routes. Service on Route Three, the Huron River Route, is going to be restored to pre-pandemic routing, including to the La Forge Road and River Street areas. New service is going to be added on Saturdays and Sundays, and buses will operate on weekdays every sixty minutes and every, excuse me, buses will operate every thirty minutes on weekdays, every sixty minutes on weekday evenings, Saturdays, and Sundays. Service on Route Four, the Washtenaw Route, will be simplified so that all trips will use routing through the University of Michigan Hospital area to reach downtown Ann Arbor. Trips through directly through central campus are going to be discontinued. This will allow all stops along the route to be served every eight minutes during weekday peak hours, every fifteen minutes mid-days, and every thirty minutes weekday evenings, Saturdays, and Sundays. This will also allow us to add time to all trips to improve on-time performance. Service on Route Five, the Packard Route, will be simplified to two branches. Trips on the five-A branch will connect downtown Ann Arbor to the Ypsilanti Transit Center. Trips on the five-B branch will connect downtown Ann Arbor to the Meyer on Carpenter Road. Service to Ypsilanti will out will operate every thirty minutes on weekdays and every sixty minutes on Saturdays. Time is going to be added to all of these trips to improve on-time performance. Service on Route Six, the Ellsworth Route, will be simplified into a single branch that connects downtown Ann Arbor to Briarwood Mall and then to the Ypsilanti Transit Center. All trips in Ypsilanti will travel on Hewitt Road and Congress Street. Service frequency will not be reduced and will continue to operate every thirty minutes. Service in the Michigan Ave corridor in Ypsilanti will be provided by Route Forty-seven, and we'll we can put the map up for that in a minute. Service Route Six serviced Ypsilanti will continue to operate every thirty minutes on weekdays and every sixty minutes on weekday evenings, Saturdays, and Sundays. Now we'll move on to the Ypsilanti local routes. Route forty-two, the MacArthur Route, I'm going to lump these routes together. Route forty-two, the MacArthur Route, Route forty-three, the the eastern, the East Michigan Avenue Route, Route forty-four, the E-course Route. And Route forty-seven, the Harriet Route, will all be restored to pre-pandemic frequencies and hours of service. This means that we'll be using the same streets as they did before the pandemic, and service will operate every thirty minutes on weekdays and every sixty minutes on weekday evenings, Saturdays, and Sundays. Route forty-five, the Galt Route, will continue to operate from the Ypsilanti Transit Center to Galt Village and the Harrian Grove Street areas. Trips east of Harrian Grove will continue to be provided by Flex Ride curb-to-curb service. We're going to show a little bit more information on that service in a couple slides from now. Route forty-five service will be restored to operate every thirty minutes on weekdays and every sixty minutes on weekday evenings, Saturdays, and Sundays. In response to customer feedback we've received over the past several months, Route forty-six is going to be extended to connect the Ypsilanti Transit Center to the Paint Creek Shopping Center, the Ypsilanti District Library on Whittaker Road, and the apartment complexes in the Huron River Drive and Textile Road areas. This includes, uh, Scooter Cove and the condos in that area. The route will be renamed from here on textile to here on Paint Creek, and trips south of here on River Drive will continue to be provided by Flex Ride curb-to-curb service. Route forty-six service will be restored to operate every thirty minutes on weekdays and every sixty minutes on weekday evenings, Saturdays, and Sundays. Trips to the Arbor Preparatory High School will be provided before and after bell times. Now for Flex Ride. Flex Ride East, this Flex Ride East service area is shown on this map in the shaded portion. I'm sorry, that was an awkward sentence. Flex Ride East service is shown by the shaded area on this map. Flex Ride is curb-to-curb service provided by accessible vehicles between locations within the area shown on this map and also directly to and from the Ypsilanti Transit Center. The hours of Flex Ride service are going to be expanded to match the hours of fixed route bus service in the area. In the Ypsilanti area, Routes forty-one, sixty-eight, and eighty-one are going to be discontinued. Route forty-one was the Eastern Michigan University College of Business Shuttle. EMU used to operate the College of Business campus on Michigan Ave, and they provided a shuttle which connected that campus to its main campus. Uh, they also provided the funding for this shuttle service. Recently, EMU moved the College of Business onto the main campus, sold the pri and sold that property on Michigan Ave. So they declined to provide funding for this shuttle service, so we're going to discontinue it going forward. Route sixty-eight was an experiment to see if a crosstown connecting service would be feast or would be feasible in the eastern Ypsilanti Township area, but we found that his business areas on that side of town began to decline. Uh, the kind of the anchor stores fell away that were supporting the route and ridership never really built up along that route. Uh, Route eighty-one was an express service that connected the James Elhart Parkway area down by the Marriott on Huron Road in Ypsilanti Township. It connected that area to downtown Ann Arbor with two trips in the morning and afternoon. And although that route operated for several years, ridership never developed on that route as well. Flex Ride curb-to-curb service for late-night and holiday trips will continue to be maintained in the area shown on this map. Late-night and holiday trips can begin and end anywhere within the designated service area on this map, and riders will be charged a flat fee no matter no matter where within that area their trips begin and end. A-Ride ADA service will continue to be available in a three-quarter mile radius around the ride's regularly scheduled fixed route bus service. There will be no changes to A-Ride or Gold Ride service in the Ypsilanti area. Will continue to implement COVID safety measures to protect customers and employees throughout the duration of the pandemic. This will include requirement for people to wear masks, sanitization of high-contact areas in buses, and limiting capacity on the buses in order to encourage physical distancing. A series of virtual town hall meetings will be held to gather feedback from the general public on these dates in March and April. The meetings are going to be held online via Zoom, and for details on how to join into these meetings, please visit theride.org. The public is the general public is also welcome to submit feedback on these service proposals from March fourth to April second. Uh, public can submit comments and questions, uh, either through the town, the online town hall meetings, through the ride's website, via phone, through email, or by sending a letter to the address shown here. I'd like to say thank you all for your time, and Forrest and I will take any questions that anybody has now.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions, but that was very thorough, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one question, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, I I don't know if I heard you mention the twenty route. Was that the Grove Street Bus, the twenty? Um, I'd like to know what's a quick like what's a formula for adding a ride or a formula for taking a bus route away? I know you mentioned a ridership, and, uh, you said how it never materialized. Is there a certain equation that that's added, uh, to 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 add a ride or to take one away?
So we look on every year, we go through and we evaluate the routes, and the measures that we use to, uh, kind of compare one route to each other is riders per hour, and that's because some routes, you don't have to put as many buses out there for them to generate as many riders as other routes that takes you four times the buses. And so what we did this time, uh, one of our main goals for this set of improvements was not just to put back what was out there that existed before the pandemic, because we had a lot of on-time performance problems in the middle of the afternoon. People were missing their transfers between routes. We weren't, you know, we were just able, we were not able to make the schedules. So part of this was to the process was to redistribute some of the resources from areas of lower productivity into to areas where we were experiencing on-time performance problems. So we don't have a hard and fast formula, but what we did for this one was we looked at some of the low-productivity routes, which were the express routes that were on the one slide. Uh, everything that's on that one slide uh, that's was slated to be discontinued except for Route forty-one. All of these were the bottom were among the bottom performing routes on the system, and so we decided to uh, redeploy those resources in order to help people make their connections better during peak hours. So does that make sense?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, um, if anybody has any questions, you are welcome to send them along to Forrest or Matt or Jesse or myself, and we will continue to to take any questions that you or your constituents have throughout this process. Uh, we are going to, once we get all the customer feedback compiled, and if we find that there are some places that we need to make changes, we're going to go out in June for a second round of town hall meetings to, uh, explain what the finalized changes are going to be. And then if we really, you know, mess something up, we'll make a change then based on feedback that we get in June, and then the service will be scheduled to go into effect at the end of August. So thank you for your time.
Sure. Uh, excuse me, could could you give a little more information about the, um, the vaccine shuttle? I know that I I was on the, um, Washtenaw Health Initiative, uh, Zoom meeting yesterday, and they had discussed it there, and and I know there's one going to the Convocation Center, but if you could give a little information about that, that would be great.
So as I understand it, and Forrest or Chris, if if I, um, say something that that we start again. Trips will be starting at both transit centers, and then we'll be taking people to the convocation centers. Um, see if I can find the detailed information on that.
And this is a free service, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Kent, this is, uh, Chris Simmons. While you're bringing that up, um, the other shuttle will be operating from Wednesday through Saturday to start, and I believe this this shuttle will be running from, uh, ten A. M. to four P. M. Uh, the schedule should be published tomorrow for those who have, uh, their Washtenaw County Health Department appointment at the E. M. U. Convocation Center. That will be both from the Ypsilanti Transit Center, I believe, from the, uh, same stand that Route Five will use, and from the Blake Transit Center in Ann Arbor. And, uh, it will be called the Vaccine Shuttle Route Two-Two-Two, uh, will show up especially on the rider tools, but, uh, all of that information, uh, I believe the press release went out late this afternoon, so that, uh, all that published information should be up and available tomorrow morning.
Mr. Anderson, would you please stop the screen sharing, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, thank you. It's better.
And from the information that we have here, if the health department expands hours of, you know, expands the hours of the vaccination clinic or the days of the week that it's serving, then we're going to work with them to. or the days of the week that it's serving, then we're going to work with them to accommodate those changes as best we're able to.
Will there be any cost for the vaccine shuttle?
No.
No? And did I hear you correctly? It's from, in, on the Ypsilanti side, it's from the Transit Center to the Convocation Center and back?
Correct.
All right. And the hours again, please?
Ten o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon, Wednesday through Saturday.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I want to say to Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Yang, thank you so much for coming to present the changes and to present the bus routes to us. And we hope that very soon, when the bus routes are ready, that people will really be ready to, to move, and we can begin to go forward. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Stay safe and stay well.
You too.
Council, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Jason Dixon, Route to a Smart City. Mr. Dixon, I can either share my screen with your slides, or if you prefer, I can make you a co-host to share your screen.
Good evening. Um, well, I can share my slides. I actually have a few different slides than what you guys have, because mostly what the package you have is just the, the support that we have for these projects due to them being an array of projects for different cities across the state of Michigan.
Okay, I made you co-host. You'd be able to share your screen now. There's a little green button at the end.
Thank, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Richardson.
Good evening.
And Council, I would like to thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to start off, I'll share my screen. All right, I'll tell you about Strategic Alliance is a community development corporation. We're 501(c)(3). Our goal is to reduce the digital divide in low-to-moderate income communities across the state of Michigan and actually now across the country. We put this program together in twenty eighteen called Hundred Family, Hundred Homes, Route to a Smart City. As we put that program together, we saw just what's happening right now. It was pretty much on the radar if we had any type of emergencies in our communities that we're not connected efficiently with the internet. Now, as you can see on our first slide, this is the, the first day of the school for the pandemic, which, you know, in the United States of America is pretty much unacceptable to have that in our communities. So, we also found that, you know, as us not being equipped properly, that a lot of kids and families are being left behind because they don't have adequate fiber to the home. They might have a bandwidth to the, to the phone, but guess what happens now? They can't afford it. Now people are getting a, a phone bill and a bandwidth additional bill like it's a car note. So, what we did was we wrote a program up, and we took an old policy that they already had in, in, in play, which is Section Eight to homeownership. Which if you have a Section Eight voucher, which is some of these communities, it's a large portion of vouchers in these communities that you can take it and use it for homeownership. So, we talked to the banks, two banks, Huntington and Flagstar, and we said, if we can get this to get traction with public housing and with these cities, could we increase housing on homeownership in these communities? And at the same time, as we increase housing, we would like you to look at Community Investment Act for infrastructure, for fiber optics to the home. So, we put that together, and they said yes. So then, you know, we gotta look at what is our solution? You have to have the city on board to get it done. We have to have those, those institutions, which right now the CEO of Flagstar is actually pulling in other additional banks and things across the country to look at this model that we have together. And you have to bring in some philanthropy. So, right now Kellogg is looking at this program that we put together as a national program. Their National Philanthropy Department is just taking a look at it. So, how do we get it done? Fiber is very essential to our community and the growth of, of communities. If you look at what's going on across the country with the delay of products and services, it's because a lot of our things are manufactured overseas. With a quite, with a adequate fiber backbone and infrastructure, we can bring offshore manufacturing onshore. But before I get into that, we looked at, how do we get the community engaged in this? Financial literacy, we have an economic competence program where we talk about budgeting and homeownership. When we start that off within your public housing in the low-to-moderate income communities in your area. Then we already have a relationship with manufacturers with fiber optics to develop the workforce development for folks that's in your communities, because it right now is slated with the Department of Labor that it's twenty years of fiber that needs to be laid across the country. So that can make our communities, people in our communities more valuable when it talks about IT and communication skills. And the opportunity to design those, those product, those projects in these communities. Then we look at how do we partner with the school? We partnered with the school with our relationship we already have established with the military for kids to learn about drones, cybersecurity and things of that nature. So it's really a whole package that we, that we're bringing to the community. So, we want to look at the, the benefits of fiber in a smart city. That's socio-economic piece to have those communities, those low-to-moderate communities have an uptick in, in a way to move forward in economics. Because you gotta look at, when you learn about fiber networking, you automatically have a livable, livable wage. The, the wage starts off at twenty-six dollars an hour and goes up. We actually have a project that we're talking about in Alaska. They said, Jason, if you had some folks to send to us, we could pay them sixty-eight dollars an hour. So, the opportunity is there. Our communities just don't know about it. Digital equity. You have to look at it. Banks are look, are not looking to build more banks. They're using the telephone to do their banking, but if people don't have access for affordable price, that's not going to happen. New business creation, as you look at the pandemic, a lot of people are going to their cell phones, just like we're using, utilizing Zoom right now to have this meeting. But without the correct bandwidth, you know, sometimes people have to turn off their video because audio is first when it comes to fiber optic. Digital, so that's the digital, the digital equity. Access to healthcare. Right now, we have to look at us, a lot of senior citizens, which is our, our baby boomers, and that's the largest population with health problems. They, they don't have enough bandwidth or can't afford the bandwidth to use a phone to connect with their physician to get their pharmacy, their medication right now and things. So, as we put this program together, we're actually reducing some disparities in the community. Environmental, you have an opportunity to test your water. You know, a lot of people are, are growing food in their yard and, and the air quality, right? So, if you have the right backbone that you can have senses in your community, you have a healthy quality of community. Government intent, public safety. I learned this from the Police Department in Incester. The, the police chief said, Jason, if we get this accomplished and have fiber optics in our communities, it'll reduce black and brown children from being snatched, and it can reduce the opportunity for human trafficking. And that, that's something I didn't even think about. Then we look at infrastructure, transportation, data-driven decisions, and their revenue, revenue generation for communities. Here's a part that we, that we're really going to be proud of, especially in what we're looking at where there's dilapidated manufacturing buildings in, in our, in our region. The benefit of, of having the fiber backbone, and we know we're going to advance manufacturing, where it's going to be seventy percent robots, thirty percent people. If we have the landscape and we have the infrastructure for that, that means we can attract those jobs and really, really be strong about attracting those jobs to our community. We have a gentleman by the name of Keith Cooper. He brought the Flexing Gate Plant to Detroit. And he's on our team, and he's also showing us how we are building those relationships overseas where we're talking about this ten, ten gigabyte infrastructure, how it's attracted to them to come to these communities to create jobs. This is just something that we, we put together for Incester because that's our pilot, and that's the, that's the city that Kellogg and Flagstar looked at for us to, to start off with, because they don't have a school system. They don't have a lot of amenities. But the Communication Workers of America, if you look at your package, they agreed to work with us to put through ten cities in Michigan. So, we wanted you guys to be one of our ten cities. So, if you look at the, the rate within the, it's a ten-mile radius, these are the corporations that's in and around the Incester area. So, they're fifteen-mile radius. They're growing corporate need for I-S-P internet connectivity. And we talked to the engineers, and we asked them what do they need? They also said, you know what, we're, we don't have enough bandwidth to be able to send our, our, to get out into the world to, to have the engineering and things to go overseas, that they have to go back and forth. It takes quite a while for that, that to happen. So, with this type of infrastructure, we can, you know, re- reduce that risk and add value to them. It gives them opportunities in that community, in these communities, to do more business with minority business companies. Oh, you know, the, the thing about this, they want us to, to take it across the country and find cities that wants to work with us. So, you know, a true ten gigabyte up and down with no data caps is very important because AT&amp;T and Comcast are now operating in that, in that array right now. The opportunity to put kiosks around the cities, so you have Wi-Fi and things of that nature. The opportunity to have free Wi-Fi for a hundred and fifty feet of that kiosk to tell the history of your city and any automotive history that you have for that city. And, and just information that you need to have. Also, we have a special program as the, as we have, pick up the advertisers. The low-to-moderate income community will not have to pay for this service. It's a community program that's institutionally-backed program by, we're working with the banks to fund this program when we're talking ten years to get this, to get this done, because we're behind the eight ball. And, you know, that's our, that's the commitment that we're asking for from them. To be able to come to your community and train folks from your community to actually install this and have an opportunity to create jobs for the future. Also, the, the IT career pipeline. We're talking to some ACBCUs, U of M and Michigan State to make sure that, that we're in, in partnership with them. So, the kids in, in the communities that we talk to will have an opportunity to say, hey, you know, they got some training already. Let's take it to higher education to make those folks in your community valuable. Our competitive advantage at this time is because AT&amp;T and Comcast really are not making a significant investment in these low-to-moderate income communities where we're able to bring a service. The goal is, and this is what we're talking to the banks, and Kellogg is about to make sure the price range is thirty percent less than our competitors. Community-owned, community-empowered, and, and do it nationwide, so we can address the situation that we're going through right now. Because it, it's always been here. We just, it's just been exacerbated. So, we looked at the, the model that we put together. It's not a, it's not a competition. It's actually can be collaborative. Because as we build the infrastructure, the other companies are able to get on that infrastructure without, without paying the, the, the struck, the money that they say they don't have to put in it. So, we're actually raising this money for these communities, so we can get that, to make that happen. So, AT&amp;T and Comcast still is able to get to their customers. But we just want to make sure we're fair and equitable to the folks that's moving upward in, in these communities. Our marketing strategy is the regular marketing strategy that you see when it comes to cable TV and, and fiber optic sales. Once we come into community, we're, we'll do some community engagement, talk to them about what's, what's going on. Tell them, show them how it adds value to the community, how fiber optics is a, a business magnet. And, 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 and pick up their, their services. The thing that we have going on as our nonprofit, we have Chauncey Bullups and quite a few basketball players on the, the retired Pistons and Pistons that's, that's ongoing players that's on our team to make this happen. We actually have Rasheed Wallace that's coming on, on board. We just got his letter of intent two weeks ago to come to these communities and talk about homeownership, because he's going to be our homeownership champion. Right now, from where we are, we have letters of intent from Incester, Highland Park. We're working on Detroit, but this is our schedule right now to start our deployment. So, our deployment is going to start in June with Incester. Then we're going to move to start with doing the canvassing in Highland, Highland Park with their face. Do the, do the Highland Park product deployment. And then we'll be doing, hopefully by July twenty-twenty-four, we'll have that, have that one done. And we're already pretty much approved for that. But we gotta look at our, our goals. The, the cities that we had on board already and talking about, these are the, the cities that we're looking at, Highland Park, Ecorse, Pontiac. And we would like to have Ypsilanti in that fray, too. So, we have goals for, you know, the three, one to three to five-year goals. And, you know, with our help, with your help, we can get to those goals quicker. Now, you guys gotta remember, this, this plan that we're putting together, we're not asking the city for any money. We're actually letting the philanthropy departments around the country work on this opportunity together collectively. So, all we need from you guys is say, the letter of intent to say, yes, we want this in our community. Work with your planning department. Find out what your goals are, to make sure we make, we have the right routes. Look at what your goals are for, for new housing and things like that, to make it more attractive for an investor to come to your communities. So, our sustainability plan is to reinvest seventy percent of the earnings into each next plan, so we can keep this ball moving. And we put these kiosks in these communities, the advertisement from the kiosk will make sure that we're able to continue to reduce the cost. Our donations from our, our corporate sponsors, I'm gonna give you an example for like Flagstar. Flagstar actually has their whole bank on our team when it comes to this portion to raise money for these communities to get this, to get this done. And that's going to be an ongoing plight, because we know this is going on across the country. Donation sponsorship grants, there's plenty of grants out there for these type of opportunities. We just need to connect the dots with our, with our cities. And it's a mutual benefit for the businesses, because if you have the right connectivity and the right bandwidth, you can, you can, you can do a lot of, lot of business, and you can do a lot of business fast. So, let's look at it. You know, socioeconomic is very important. It's something that most, most folks don't talk about a lot. It's getting to become popular now, but, you know, we started this in twenty eighteen prior to the pandemic. So, we had our foresight. Our eyes was on the prize earlier than, than, than most. Essential infrastructure, workforce development and education, access to financial services, small business development, affordable housing, access to healthcare, pipeline of education. I want to go back to that affordable housing piece. Housing costs i- in your area is, is skyrocketing, right? So, if we look at how to partner to bring those costs down upfront and look at how you have cost savings by partnering with nonprofits that have some foresight about infrastructure for the future. Because one thing that I didn't mention, most of our communities have stormwater infrastructure problems. As we teach these young people about fiber optics, it, it's adjacent running the opportunity for stormwater infrastructure to do those projects in our communities, because it's needed. So, you know, I'm really going to stop right there, because I had that fifteen minutes, and I was trying to stay in that space so I could be respectful. So, if you guys have any questions, you know, I think this is a great opportunity to, to shoot.
Wow, thank you, Mr. Dixon. That, that is amazing. It's quite interesting. And Council, I want to thank first, before I go open it up, I want to thank Mr. Morgan and Ms. Simmons for putting this on the agenda. Thank you so much for bringing it to us. Now, the floor is open for those that might have questions for Mr. Dixon's comments. And again, with the screen sharing, I can't see all hands. So, if you want to say something, you have permission to begin.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Dixon, for taking the time to, to come out and present to us. That was a fascinating presentation. It's a lot of information. I just want to ask one question. With the infrastructure, who owns the infrastructure? Does the city, is each individual city own the infrastructure, or is it a, the investors? Or is it a, a, a connected ownership? Like, who owns it?
It'd be a connected ownership, a public-private partnership.
Okay. And for a tenure, you said a tenure investment, correct?
Yes. So, right now, we're looking at how long, how long would it take to, you know, get the cities, you know, up and running? And get it all. And get it all, um, the cities that we picked for our ten cities, the ten cities that get into our, our, our program is, is a ten, uh, ten year program.
Ten year per city or ten year total?
Ten year total.
Okay, and just for a city of our size, my last question, for a city of our size, which is comparable to Inxter when not, is there a, a ballpark figure of investment that these companies likes, uh, the, the banks and different private organizations like Kellogg are?
So, your, your city is about twelve million.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And you did say it would be at no cost to the city?
Uh, yes ma'am, that's, that's, that's our total goal. I mean, right now, that's our total goal, uh, Flagstar, Kellogg, we, we're all at the table trying to get that model together and they're having talks. And all they keep telling me is Jason, do, do the presentation, let us do our thing, let us, let us worry about raising money and get this first one, the first one shoveling the ground, but you, you keep doing that, because the investors need to know who needs this opportunity and why they need the opportunity. And in your guys' case, in my mind, it would be say, to say, hey, you know what, we know, we, we know that type of infrastructure adds cost to a housing development and things of that nature. How do we get that costly strategy so we can bring those prices back down and make it attractive for new home, new, new, new housing? So that's, that's in my mind, that's the format I'm thinking for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox, and I see you unmuted, did you have?
Um, I did, I, I, I think it's an interesting idea, thank you, Mr. Dixon, for the, for the presentation. When I went through the slides before, I was like, it, it, maybe it was just late at night, but this makes a whole lot more sense with your, your presentation. Um, uh, actually, I have questions for, for anybody who can answer them, um, not necessarily for Mr. Dixon, but I know that we hadn't, there had been a lot of chatter about, uh, universal broadband within the city of Ypsilanti a few years back. And I don't recall what the, um, what the hurdles were that, that, uh, inhibited that from happening. So if anybody had information on that, I'd, I'd like to know what this looks like in, in terms of the historical context from, from a few years ago, when people were talking about this. And the second question, um, for anybody is, um, you know, we had a lot of installation from Metronet in the last year. And I'm trying to figure out how, how this would, uh, dovetail with that, if, if there, you know, would be issues with that.
So I can ask you, I, I know about your first question, it was cost. It always goes back to how you, how do you pay it back?
Hmm.
So the, the reason why we put together a, a, a system where you, you feed into the economic system, it, you don't, you're not looking at a payback, so we, we're going back to social economics. So when you talk to the philanthropy departments, it's about how do you, it's about the, the community and the build of the community and the quality of life of the folks in the community to make it a, 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 a even playing field, so to speak. So that, that's, that's answered that first question. The second question about your, your company that you guys did have some fiber in it. On our side, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt us at any, a- a- at any way, it can help us. Because actually, if you already have some there, we can talk to them about tying in and reducing that cost, because you already have it laid there. And that's a, that's a, that's a leg up for everyone.
Just a last comment, I mean, you know, knowing how students are struggling with, with, uh, studying at home. I mean, this, this makes sense, and, and it's unfortunate that we're behind the curve on this, right? Um, that's just a comment, I mean, the sooner we can get this, get broadband to everybody, I think the better off we'll all be.
Yes, yes. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Dixon, you guessed, like you wanted to say something.
I was gonna say one thing that I, another thing that we just, uh, learned that we could do for the police department in your areas, they actually can have their own radio signal where they can be anywhere in the country and be able to pick up off a broadband your, your fire and safety. I, I just learned that, that's part of the symmetric that they're putting together for our packages, uh, with the engineering department, and I, I just thought about that.
Very good.
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Dixon, um, you indicated that your first, um, pilot project is with Inxter. And your timeline is out to twenty twenty four, is that correct?
Yeah, so the reason for that is because of, of the, the funding piece. Because they have grants and things that's, that's rolling, like we just got a forty million dollar grant put on that we're talking about tomorrow. So we have, we have, uh, anchors, so oftentimes you have these grants, if you don't have money to the table already, you have to stretch your time out. But, yeah, that's where we are.
Okay, so if the city of Ypsilanti were to, uh, sign a letter of intent, then we would be behind, um, Highland Park and Pontiac, right?
Not necessarily so.
That's okay.
Not necessarily so, because what we're doing is we have, we actually have, uh, a team educators that we can train folks from your communities.
Okay.
So as we do the engineering, we, we have a pro- we have a process that we, we vetted so far. We actually have some retired folks from AT and T that's on our leadership team. And as we come to the communities, we educate, uh, there's, uh, the Department of Labor. We can actually train folks and do installations while they're, while they're in school, so it's like an apprenticeship program. So as we continue to educate, we can keep the ball rolling to develop these communities.
Okay, um, I had another question, um, I'll just hold it for now as I think about that, thank you.
And that, that's a good question too, because that's the question that I asked when they said, they said, Jason, just get the cities together. Uh, but see, when you, when you have cities that you want to, that want to do this and get this done, because we're not asking any money, we're not holding you up on whatever you have going on. Our job is to make sure we go to the proper departments of Treasury, Department of Commerce, and say, hey, look, we need this in these communities. And that's our job to fight to get that, because we have the leverage that we have right now as a whole economic development program for these type of communities.
Mm-hmm, so have you given yourself, um, a timeline? I know you said ten years.
Hmm.
That's for the entire, um, pilot. Um, so say for instance, you know, you, you, you get to twenty four and, uh, you know, it just hasn't panned out. Um, do you have plans going back to these municipalities?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Look, I've been doing this since twenty eighteen, and people didn't understand, people, you know, I'm gonna tell you, oftentimes, we don't have foresight. They'll say, well, Comcast has this together, and I'm, I'm saying, you know, well, did you do the data? Look at the data, Comcast might have a ten dollar program, but if you don't pay your old bill, you can't get in that ten dollar program. If you're in that ten dollar program for, for low to moderate income people, but you got five kids, you only gonna get so much bandwidth. And you're off, so this, it's doing, it's a Band-Aid, it's just like wifi. It's a Band-Aid, if you don't understand technology, number one is a Band-Aid, number two is a risk. Because now you're, while you're on wifi, wifi was made to check your emails only. Wifi is not to do banking services, it's not to have anything that routes back to your social security number. It's not to have anything that routes back to, uh, uh, somebody you're doing business with, like a, 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 say you're doing online, um, uh, shopping at J C Penney's or something. It's not made for that. And we're not talking about that, the people, the powers that be are not talking about how they put you at risk, because they want to make that money to do the wifi, because it's, it's, it's quick, quick money. And we're, and we're not saying, you know, that's, that's risky for our communities.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Simmons?
No, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Dixon, for coming, I, this sounds very interesting and, you know, uh, would, you know, greatly benefit our community, other communities. And, um, thank you, Councilwoman Morgan, for, um, bringing it to my attention, I was interested in hearing more, and I'm really glad that you came today, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones Chance, any questions or comments?
Uh, no, nothing from me, it sounds good so far, and, uh, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Morgan for, uh, bringing it to our attention.
All right, well, with the approval of council, I would like to ask that, uh, city manager McMullen and staff, along with, uh, Mr. Barr, do some, um, deeper digging into this, um, what we've been presented with and looking at it and seeing, uh, if it is something that we as a city could, uh, look at and possibly become a part of. It certainly, uh, offers many benefits to the city. And if it's not going to cost us, you know, uh, it'd be a cost to us, I would like for us to check it out further. Yes, uh, Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile looking into, I mean, certainly, right, if it, uh, didn't cost us anything, it would certainly benefit our community. And so it's, it's worthwhile exploring to see if it's something that, you know, that could work here and, and happen here. Do, do you need me to make a motion, or?
Well, if you would.
Okay, so, um, I moved to, um, have the city manager and, like, do we say city clerk, Mr. Barr, or city staff, sorry. Um, I look into, uh, this program and, and, you know, check into, I, I'm not sure, I'm not being very eloquent. Um, but anyway, to look into this program, see if it's something that could benefit our community, might be a good fit. So moved, I don't know.
It's our city's program, yeah. It's been moved in second that, uh, that city manager and staff, including Mr. Barr, would look in, um, to this program. I guess, Mr. Hulanga, did you get her, uh, the motion down? I think we all understand it.
Thank you.
It was moved in second.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dixon, if our city, uh, as a whole decided to furnish a letter of, of, of support, and later we decided that we wanted to not be a part of it, would you send that letter without any penalties?
No, you're the first person who asked that question, to be honest with you, so, you know, I'm, at this point, I, I can only say, um, yes. As long as we don't have a, a capital expenditure or a grant that we tied to, to that, um,
Okay.
That's what I could say.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
And so, and you don't know right now if grants will require, is it possible that you would come to us for matches?
No, that's what we're using the philanthropy partners for, that's why we got the big guns, that's why, that's why we have Kellogg. And, you know, we have the Kellogg, we have the NBA, uh, team, so we're not, we don't have to come to the city and ask for money.
Have you approached the Bill Gates Foundation?
So my job is not to do that.
Oh.
Kellogg, Kellogg is making those calls for us, we don't, we don't, they told me do, I'm doing just what I was asked to do.
To do, I hear you.
Their own team to, and, and, uh, so we have a great, the philanthropy team is great. Uh, I listen to their phone calls, and I, I'm amazed at the people that they're bringing to the table to get this goal accomplished. Uh, so I'm, I'm following directions, they say, Jason, do your presentation and make sure you, uh, talk to their community for what they need, that you know they need. And I know housing is a problem, and I know that can reduce costs, and that, I don't know that you have a lot of vacant land for manufacturing, but we know that we can reduce that cost for housing development.
All right, thank you, we do have two possible sites for manufacturing, so.
Okay, well, that's something to talk about.
Yes, okay. All right, it has, there's, uh, any comments on the motion, it's been moved in second. Seeing none, Mr. Hulanga, would you please call the roll?
Um, prior to calling the ro- roll, I will, uh, read the motion.
Okay.
Simmons moved to have the city manager and staff to evaluate this program, and it was seconded by, uh, Councilmember Wilcoxon. Did I encapsulate the motion correctly?
Is that what you did?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Somerville?
Um, can you come back to me?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Where does he disappear to?
He's out of range on his, uh, well.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan? Motion carries six yes and one absent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Mr. Dixon, thank you again for coming and presenting to us, and I look forward to hearing from the work between you and our staff and our city manager, and I, um, I see real potential and will help for the city, so, thank you. And be encouraged in all that you're doing.
Yes ma'am, I appreciate that, appreciate that. All right, you guys have a good night, thank you very much, thanks council for the votes, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council, the next item on the agenda is a presentation, uh, provided by David Roberts regarding extending the dates to the street closure. Mr. Roberts, I have, uh, um, assigned you as co-host, so you should be able to share your screen now, I understand you have additional slides.
I'm gonna change things up a little bit, let's see if this works. Hmm, can you see that?
Not yet.
I'm sorry, was that a yes?
No.
Didn't see anything.
Hmm, okay, um, let me try one other thing. Sometimes, uh, let me try, try doing this. I work with dual screens, and so that might be giving us a problem. Can you see it now?
No.
Let's see, let me see if I can hit the share button. Well, let me try one more thing. Oh, technology, huh?
Yes. Wonderful when it works.
Yeah, doesn't it? All right, let's try it this way. How about now?
Andrew, you're muted.
Even with dual screens, if you hit that share screen button, there should be another window that pops up and you select which screen you want to share.
Okay. How about now?
No, why don't I just share my screen and you just skip the?
Yeah, I'll just talk about the other charts that I, that one other chart that I put, put in there, okay. We tried.
Okay. Should be all set, uh, to move forward with the presentation.
Um, yeah, let me see if I can get back in here. Is this it?
Uh, no, still can't see you, but I have my screen share with the presentation, if you want to just go ahead and, again.
Okay. Just odd, okay, I guess we're just screwing around with it anyway, um, I'm sorry about that, let's see if this does it. All right, I think I got it now. All right, so, um, first of all, I want to just thank, thank you guys for the invitation to, to do a presentation here today. Uh, Lois said, expressed an interest in understanding what, what their rest, the Ypsilanti restaurant, uh, state is. And so she asked me to bring bring in a couple of other people and talk about what's going on in the independent restaurants. So, and I don't know if they're here. I think Royce is on. And also Sean Cool was invited to to participate. So there would be three of us. I did try to have somebody come from Depot Town, but that did not work out. So I'm gonna try to to just be brief on this and and focus on where we stand with regards to what's going on in the industry. So the discussion that we're talking about here, when I'm talking about restaurants is is really the restaurants that are independent restaurants. And this is a group that's been particularly hard hit across the US because of kind of where they are in in the types of businesses that they run. So I'm talking about places like Sidetrack, Aubrey's, Worst Bar, Hobbs, et cetera, and not really the Subway's, Domino's, or McDonald's of the world. You know, I think Domino's is actually up over last year because people have been buying pizzas instead. And so these businesses have really been hard hit by the the pandemic. And and it's happened through a number of different elements, which I think mostly you're familiar with. The closing of the dine-in options were about four months. And last year and about one month so far this year. Uh, there's been restrictions on seating capacity. It was twenty-five percent now up to fifty percent. And there's been some group size limitations as well. Uh, potential diners have feared getting the COVID virus. Um, and that has actually had a a big impact. We at the, uh, at the El House had a, we're seeing an impact in February of last year. Before the shutdown. And and frankly, we were already operating at probably twenty-five percent for the the governor closed down the dine-in option. And it's, um, you know, it's kind of the market that we're in. Um, we're in a fairly educated market with, uh, you know, two universities and and Washington Community College. And so we have a fairly educated, uh, population here. So they responded to the news that was out there. They weren't waiting for the governor's orders. Uh, also, you know, potential, and I think this has been an issue as we've gone along, is that the potential diners have also been hard hit by layoffs and short of working hours. A number of people that live in Ypsilanti, you know, work in Ann Arbor. And, uh, Ann Arbor has really shut down a lot of, a lot of operations. And I think that has affected the workforce in Ypsilanti. Uh, some rest, some of the restaurants have closed permanently, like Dolores, B twenty-four. I think all these is in that category. There's a bunch of them, and I just put down a sprinkling of them here. Uh, some of which are actually chains. Um, and then some are closed short term due to COVID or business reasons, sidetracked. Decided that they didn't want to run in in January because they didn't think that they could make, uh, uh, money. They well, they actually would lose more money by being open than closed. Uh, Bellflower and the El House, we were closed for some periods because of of COVID. Uh, you can move to the next slide. And so, um, you know, uh, with regards to the impact, um, we want to be on the impact slide, uh, the COVID pandemic. Yeah, and so business is down dramatically. Um, I've done an informal survey. We talked to a lot of restaurants. Our beer is distributed in a variety of places. And the, uh, the survey that I that I've gotten, I've talked to people is, for the most part, these places are down about seventy to eighty percent in terms of a revenue drop. And, you know, just imagine your household, what would happen with that if you had an eighty percent drop in revenue? You start doing a lot of different things and you start struggling. And a lot of that is due to the fact that our, these places are typically structured for dining and not carry out delivery. Uh, meanwhile, the the cost of continued to accrue. So things like rent, utilities, and insurance and licenses are almost constant uh, over this period. Uh, yes, okay, there's some adjustments on some of those, but for the most part, you're still having to pay those, those costs. The job losses have really been extensive. And I just kind of guessed at these things, looking at what was going on, but typically the staff reductions have been in the order of sixty to eighty percent. And, you know, for example, in Depot Town, I said, maybe there's about two hundred people that have have lost their jobs. So Aubrey's is a good example. Their normal staff in twenty nineteen was in the order of forty-five people, and they're currently at fifteen. You know, and on West Cross, you you know, you're down maybe a hundred and fifty. I think it's even a lot higher than that if you consider some of the other places. Uh, Royce can talk about what happened at, um, at the Tower Inn. But he's down in the same type of range of these things. In downtown, I think we're down, I'm gonna estimate at about two hundred, um, about two hundred jobs. So, and I know, and I don't know if Sean's on or not, but I can talk a little bit about what he told me about what's going on at there if he's not on. And then if you start factoring in other other areas and businesses such as on Whittaker Road, uh, Carpenter, or Washina, E-Force, Michigan Ave, all these other places, they've been hit just as badly. So the area in terms of job losses has been quite extensive. And I would also observe that without the federal, state, and local government, almost all of the, a lot of these places would have been closed temporarily, if not permanently. So it's not been a very good outlook, uh, or a good situation. Now, the slide that I was going to introduce that was in the chart pack that I have that I was trying to share is I wanted to talk about the impact of the COVID pandemic on the owners and operators and and what we have tried to do and what has been, what has been happening. And and again, these are are independent places. They're run by a very thin staff of people. And I I would tell you that the, these owners and managers are are have been running with a fairly high level of stress after the last year. They've spent lots of time on running their businesses in this rapidly changing environment. Um, they've had to shift their business model. When Dyna, Dynan was closed to a, to more carry out delivery and limited dine, you know, with the limited dine-in. I mean, for example, we moved from one delivery service to four. And all of that requires menus to be put up online and maintained. Uh, and different people working with different companies with their different policies has been challenging. And a lot of this has also led then to fluctuating staff levels. And that has been a challenge, uh, to try to manage that. You know, we have some people who were willingly going on unemployment. And we have other people who had other jobs and then we did work with those. And then we had people who really needed a job and didn't want to go on unemployment. Uh, and so, you know, for the El House in particular, we tried to stay open the entire time and and have been fairly successful at that. We've also had to deal with changing supply chains. You know, for example, just trying to find gloves to meet, uh, health uh, department requirements has been a challenge. Um, gloves which pre-pandemic were thirty-six dollars for uh, a case of of ten boxes shot up to being over a hundred dollars. And so that gets you into spending a lot of time trying to manage your supply chain to look for the lowest cost solution. If you could find gloves and as a low-cost solution. Um, and and then also, we spent a lot of time just trying to develop optimal responses to the situations, you know, do we stay open? Do we close? Uh, a place like Haymaker in Ann Arbor shifted entirely to to, uh, take out and delivery and never opened their dine-in because they didn't think it was going to make them any money. So, um, so there's a variety of different strategies out there and and different restaurants have taken different strategies. Uh, Sidetrack, for example, closed in January. And that they thought that was their, let's say, profit maximizing position was to be closed. Now, I think they have an advantage in the sense that they own the building, so they're not paying rent. And then there, and then managers and owners have had to deal with all the new stuff, like developing a COVID plan with new policies and procedures. The changing regulations, which, you know, you just, um, you you saw it in the in the press that, you know, one day you're doing this and the next day something else, and you gotta do this ruling, then it gets changed three days later. All of that has required a lot of work. Uh, working on unemployment has added a bunch of work for managers and owners. Um, I think I spent somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty hours last year working on unemployment uh, related issues. And I mean, and and the year prior, I had essentially none. And i- it's been a challenge to just even get hold of people, to ask them questions at the unemployment insurance agency and, you know, ask anybody who's unemployed about how that worked. And then, um, you know, my next point is that, you know, we're trying to understand the federal and state programs designed for small businesses has been a big challenge. Um, I've talked to some people about these two programs. One is the um, the Paycheck Protection Plan. Another one is a employee retention tax credit. And I can tell you, I've sat through several webinars on those, and they are complex. Um, and, uh, you you're dealing with thousands of dollars potentially, and it's, um, it's a challenge to 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 try to optimize that. Uh, we've also applied for grants. We've talked to landlords and other suppliers to manage some of the financial aspects. You know, when we missed and had money to pay rent for this month or that. And the the bigger point on all of this is is not woe is we as as owners, but I'll tell you, the stress levels are 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 hitting points where people want to get out of the business. And I can, I can give you examples of people that are just like, they're done. You know, like Liberty Street Brewing, the owner of that is 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 happily moving on and 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 selling out. Some other places like the Pointless Brewery in in Ann Arbor, you know, they just decided to close. Um, other places have closed, uh, you know, in Ann Arbor, like uh, like Logan's, and some of these places that have been around for a long time. You know, Arbor Brewing decided to to vacate their place in Ypsilanti or in Ann Arbor. So, anyway, that's kind of the background on what was happening on the ownership of managers. Now I can talk about the outlook for twenty-one, which is really, I think, becoming more positive. I mean, the vaccinations are rolling out and are having an impact. I talked to people who come in and visit the El House, and I find that, you know, that they're getting braver and braver. The people who've had the 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 two shots. By the time they get their second one, they're they're feeling pretty good. And and that's really well justified. The medical research so far is showing that that's really been supportive. Um, that people aren't getting sick and going to the hospital. And the restrictions are being lifted for seating capacity and closing time. The federal government has stepped up with these newly revised programs, and I think that those are gonna help a lot. I won't get into any detail if you, if somebody wants to, we can take that offline. But, uh, that's happening a lot. And there's some new stuff that's going to be coming down with the new pro, the package that was signed off last week, and 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 that's pretty good. But there would, those details won't be available for probably another four to six weeks to, and then that's where we can really find out whether there's value there or not for us. And we'll probably get some more state initiatives later on this year, at least I would hope, uh, once kind of the the, uh, I don't know, Wagmire and Lansing gets more resolved. Anyway, um, go to the next chart. And this is my last chart. Really, it's support that's requested from from us for the city, and that's really set the example and get vaccinated, encourage vaccinations. The more we get to whatever, you know, your definition is of herd immunity, I think the the faster we get there, the better. Be positive in your conversations. I think things are looking up. We will survive this. Uh, encourage buying local. Um, and then finally, uh, we appreciate the, uh, closing of the the streets. That will help us, uh, a lot, both in the Depot Town area and downtown. And I know that there's a resolution to, uh, close, uh, Washington Street, um, earlier. Uh, or on a different timeline than Depot Town, and that's great. We really appreciate that support. I can tell you that Bobcat Bonney's, uh, Matt told me that sixty percent of his revenue came from the street last year. So this is not an unimportant thing, um, for for the businesses on Washington. And I I I just want to say we really appreciate that support. All right, with that, I conclude my section. And I don't know if, uh, Royce has got some comments he wants to put in, and I think Chris Jacobs had some comments too.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
I hope that met your need, Lois.
Well, I hope it met yours. I was accommodating you. So we just needed to to hear from, uh, the restaurants that were here. So what's been going on with you? Mr. Royce? Now, I think Royce is your first name. I'm sorry. But.
Mayor, I was told that, uh, um, Royce would not be speaking on this.
Okay, no problem.
And Mr. Jacobs is available to make comment.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah, uh, I think Dave Roberts did a great job summarizing, uh, the difficult conditions imposed by the pandemic on the restaurant industry locally. Um, appreciate him taking the time to really champion, uh, what we got going down downtown for, uh, the street closures. And, uh, I don't have a lot to add other than to thank Mr. Roberts for his time and thank Council for their support.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Roberts. And, uh, does that bring us to the resolution, Mr. Helanga?
No, that resolution is under resolutions, motions, and discussions.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts, for coming. And if you're going to stick around, we will, uh, address the resolution later.
Okay, hey, thank you again for the opportunity.
No problem. Mr. Helanga?
Council, the next item on the agenda are the public hearings. Uh, the first public hearing is regarding the approve, uh, bringing the vacation of alley running from South Washington Street to South Huron Streets. That is Resolution Number twenty twenty-one zero five one, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city has an interest in protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And whereas the city has an ordinance, City Code Chapter ninety-four, providing all the procedure for vacating a public alley. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the alley vacation in regard to land use, neighborhood needs, and safety, and held a public hearing. And whereas the Planning Commission recommended city council adopt the proposed alley vacation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council adopt the alley vacation entitled Vacation of Alley between South Huron and South Washington, south of Buffalo. Be it further resolved that the city and utility authorities shall retain and reserve within the former alley an easement for installation and maintenance of utilities. Be it further resolved that properties at four zero six South Huron, four zero eight South Huron, one zero nine Buffalo, and one one three Buffalo shall retain access to the former alley through a shared use easement to ensure no access is deterred. Be it further resolved that access to the former alley shall not be restricted within twenty feet along the South Washington and South Huron frontages.
Is there a motion? I hear no support.
Support.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, there's an open hearing.
Uh, council, the public hearing open. I will, um, inform the members of the attendees list to please raise their hand. They'll have three minutes to address council. Uh, there is one hand raised. I will allow them to speak now. The name is Stuart. You'll have three minutes to make comment.
Hi, my name is Stuart Beal. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Stuart Beal. I live at one thirteen Buffalo. I filled out this application with my neighbor who owns the house at four oh six South Huron. Um, we filled this out because, uh, people drive very, very Drive very, very fast through uh, the alley. Uh, at a very high rate of speed and he, the resident of four oh six South Huron has two young daughters. I think three years old and one years old. He, his wife is pregnant, so they're about to have a third daughter. And then my family who lives at one thirteen Buffalo, we have three young daughters, uh, seven, five and three. And there's been some incidences where uh, there's been cars that are cutting through the alley to go to Joe's Party Store. At very hard, high rates of speed. Um, you know, almost running over our, our children. And uh, we've also had some uh, some people uh. Overdose on drugs in the alley over the last a couple of years. So we got together with the residents who live at uh, all four addresses. There's just four addresses that are off the alley. Uh, four oh eight South Huron, four oh six South Huron, uh, one oh nine Buffalo and one thirteen Buffalo. Uh, we got together and we have agreed to um, uh, restore the alley in terms of removing the existing pavement. Installing new pavement and just make it uh, restricted access for the four addresses. Uh, to, to help with the life and safety of the residents that live off the alley. Thank you.
Thank you. You're muted, Mr. Halinga.
There doesn't appear to be anyone else you, uh, with their hand raised. Uh, so if you like, we can move on.
Yes, please.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the public hearing to consider an ordinance titled Vacation of Alley between South Huron and South Washington. South Buffalo be officially closed.
So moved.
Support.
This could be a voice vote.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, alright, uh, the public hearing is now closed. Any comments or questions? Discussion? Uh, council member Somerville.
Yeah, I just have a question about the, are all the property owners, are they all owner occupied or are these, are any of these rentals? None of them are. Steve's shaking his head. Maybe Andy?
There are, there are two, um. Mr. Beal owns one of the properties, owns three of the properties and lives in one of them. And then the other person that he was speaking of lives in the other property. I was at the planning commission where all this was, was uh.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
When I, I'm asking, when I ask for a vacation and to, to make it. Are they asking to put money into it to make it so it's not drivable through? And if so, what are they, how much money are they putting into the, the alley to make it? Uh, not drive-through-able?
Hey, council member, I can start to answer the, the beginning part of that question. Yes, it would be the landowner's responsibility to then maintain that alley and um. Uh, just keep, keep, keep it up with maintenance. Um. There, I don't know any kind of value there that they're looking to put into it as of now.
Is that, is that correct? That you're seventy-five percent of the landowner in that property space?
Mr. Beal and the um, I believe his LLCs own, um, yes, three of the four properties.
Council member, were you done, Mr. uh, Morgan?
I, I, I was waiting for him to finish answering the question.
Oh, okay. I think he's through.
Okay, you said that Mr. Beal and his LLC owns three of the four homes?
Yep, correct.
Is that a particular conflict of interest for this particular? It seemed like, well, it seemed, well, I, I, I would imagine that's a conflict of interest for, for, for four homes. And I, I do a, agree to the safety and wellness of all community members and families. Um, but I think if it was. Different households represented in that, that agreement, it would be easier to digest. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Council member Somerville.
Yeah, I just have a question about like, so logistically, the idea here is to block that off, so there's no through traffic?
I believe Mr. Beal wants to install a rolling or automated gate um. Of some, of some kind, um, where only uh, members of the. Proposed easement, which would be the four properties listed, um, would have access to that gate. And abilities to open it as well as um, the eas, uh, utility authorities and the city could. Have access to the gate.
Okay, that seems a little complicated, but um. We don't have, I, I, are other, are there other communities that have something similar to this right now?
I am not sure.
Okay. Um, interesting. Okay, that's all I have.
Council member Simmons and then Mr. Jones Chance.
Actually, to, to answer, I think, um, council member Somerville's question. So actually, the house I lived in, um. Oakwood Street, the alley was vacated and it was this prior to my moving in there, but there was a gate that was, you know, was. It wasn't permanent, right? It could be opened and um, you know, if utilities were coming through or somebody needed to go through, but. It, it discouraged because they would, there is apparently, you know, a lot of traffic that kind of was coming and going and. You know, whatever. So anyway, so um, I'm, I'm assuming it's kind of similar to that and I can't, I gotta believe there's other. Situations like that in, in the city as well, but um, yeah, so I was just trying to answer that question. Thanks.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, so it looks like the recommendation from planning and if I remember the meeting correctly is that the. Gate not begin until twenty feet from the beginning, the entrance of the alley. So as far as utilities go, if there were some kind of a keep-pop system, I mean, obviously that's not gonna work for utilities. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I don't know what kind of access Mr. Beal would be or the. You know, the easement holders would be giving to utility, to the utility authorities. There is, there is an option that. Um, the city or utility authorities could abandon the easement as well and then therefore. It would, you know, therefore the easement would be totally left for the easement holders of the four properties. However, we're not recommending that yet and I don't, I don't really know how that abandonment looks. I would imagine the utility lines would have to be removed and the underground would need to be checked for gas. Um, so as of right now, um, I don't think the city wants to or utility authorities want to do either. Um, so that's why we are right, that's why planning commission recommended um, keeping the easement for utility authorities and the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tim, I'm not seeing you, but did you have any questions or comments?
Um, I'm sorry, no, uh, my question was actually answered regarding the gate, so I'm all good, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I have one more comment.
Yes.
Um, the planning commission, it was their idea to uh, to, to, to bring forth the idea of the gate? Is uh, whose idea was it to, to, to use the gate concept? Was that the planning commission?
So the, the applicant originally, um, I know that the applicant, Mr. Beal has wanted to put a gate up, a gate up. However, the planning commission formulated the condition that there shall be no obstruction such as a gate within the first. Twenty feet of frontage of both South Huron and South Washington. That's just so that a, a vehicle who is accessing the alley isn't going to queue up on one of those streets. That they can at least pull into that twenty foot of space and then. If the gate is stalling to open or there is malfunctioning or anything like that, they're not blocking traffic.
Okay, I would be interested in seeing different kind of configurations that would meet the same needs. Uh, beyond the gate, if there were other mechanisms or methods that will keep cars from speeding. Um, through that area, um, I think there has to be more clever, creative ways of, other than the gate. And so I would be more inclined to support this if there were a variety of things that we could choose from to better suit, suit the needs of the city. But I thank Mr. Beal and other families for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Um, but I think the planning commission, in, in theory vetted those other options, correct, Mr. Ma?
There wasn't any, I'll be honest, there was not any specific alternatives to a gate. Um, they didn't mention anything like speed bumps or uh, traffic calming measures. It is a twenty foot alley and um, in terms of obstacles. The, the garages are built right up pretty much to those alley lines, so it isn't a safe place to speed through to begin with. Because there are plenty of blind spots. Um. The gate was really the, the only um, kind of implement that was discussed.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments? We ready to? Mr. Jones Chance.
I guess this would be a question for staff. Is there um. Do you think that this is the best remedy for the um. The speeding issue down that alley? Um, are there other things that have worked that, that could be tried?
I don't know if there's ever been any temporary placement of any barriers or speed bumps by. Department of Public Services um, in the past. Um, I don't have that knowledge. I believe the Department of Public Services actually did close the alley, which means. Um, it's still, it's still a public way. It's just not to be maintained anymore by Department of Public Services. Um, I hope I'm answering that correctly, but I do believe there was a formal closure of the alley at one point. Um, but the vacation means that the surrounding landowners can now. Um, at Circuit Court take claim to title of the alley and then have their legal descriptions. Um, revised to show that they then owned that land.
Okay.
Um, so the benefit there is they'd be the one then in, you know, responsible to maintain and repave or, or whatnot.
Right, but the city and utilities authorities would still have the easements.
Correct.
Uh, basically, it's what it is now with a gate.
Yeah. Yeah, and the ability to, to repave would be on the, the landowners, the private landowners.
Okay. Uh, thanks.
Mayor, I think you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I wasn't sure if you saw me or not. Um, do we have any records of the speeding? I'm just curious about if it's kind of like, it doesn't, it doesn't seem possible.
I don't, I don't have any records of. Um, observations or anything like that officially from the city that has tracked this. Um, it seemed like a very dangerous place to speed because like I said, there are garages built right up to. Pretty much the property line, so there are blind spots, so they a place that would be very dangerous to, to speed in.
Okay, seeing and hearing, no other hands?
I, sorry, I'm sorry. I like, so I don't really have an issue with, with vacating the alley. I do kind of have an issue agreeing with putting up a gate. I, I don't know, it, I, I don't know. It just seems. I guess this is the first time I'm hearing about the speeding and granted, that's not my ward, so I wouldn't maybe be the person to get that complaint. Um, but there does, it, I don't know, I, I. It'd be one, you know, less thing that our DPS department would have to worry about maintaining. And I think if residents want, if property owners want to have that responsibility, that's cool, but I just. It, the, the gate thing seems a bit. Odd, I, I guess because I haven't heard about the speeding before this. I don't know if others have any concerns about that.
I could say as representative, that's in Ward one, I have never heard of any problems uh. About speeding. I don't know if Mayor Pro Tim has, I know I have not. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance is new. As a representative there, but um.
Oh, I apologize. The alley, I have not heard. Um, I haven't received any calls around that. Um, so yeah, I can't speak to. The alley, I have not in my, even in my years being on council heard that.
Okay, um, Ms. Simmons.
It sounded like it wasn't just about speeding though either. I mean, he was addressing some other concerns too. A couple overdoses, so I think it's also people kind of traversing through and so I think it's, the gate is also to discourage. Um, you know, people from kind of going through the alley, which is um, the same kind of issues that they had. Um, again, where I, I had lived previous, the, the previous uh, uh, folks had a lot of kind of just people coming through and it, it helped kind of. Slowed down some of that traffic um, for folks too, and also just cars kind of driving through that, I don't know, but. It, it didn't sound like it was just all about speeding, that was the impression I got.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Okay, so um, yeah, and I, I can't, I agree with that, the game is kind of funny, but I don't, I can't think of any. I can't think of any real negative to it. Um, if we don't want free flow of traffic through there, um. Uh, and if the city has already vacated or not vacated, but if the, the city has already officially closed the alley, I'm, I mean, I'm kind of curious. As to whether or not we might find some other similar property owners in other areas who want to take over responsibility of, of alleys that. You know, the city has uh, has officially closed. Um. So I mean, I guess the thought for me would be is there. What sort of justification or how should we be thinking about whether or not to vacate an alley when these issues come up? Um, does there need to be a legitimate complaint at all? Um, if the city has closed an alley, is there a reason for us to continue to? Own it? Um, there's just some things that I'm going through my head that maybe we also think about.
Okay. Now, we have a question. Would there be, um, would that alley be restricted to uh, certain uses? Like, could you have parking in that alley?
No, from my knowledge, you, you couldn't block it um, with any permanent impediments. You couldn't um, build a structure on it, like a building. Um. And I believe, you know, I think, I think a rolling gate would be okay as long as. You know, access codes and, and access to open it are provided to the easement holders. Um, in terms of simply uh, park in the middle and block the alley, I don't, I don't think, I think that that would be violating the. The easement.
Okay, seeing no other hands or uh, raised, I, let's um. Mr. Halinga, would you call the row, please?
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Council member Morgan?
No.
Council member Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
No.
House member Somerville.
Yes.
Motion fails with three yes votes and four no votes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda.
Council, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Grant For funds to help construct an accessible fishing and canoe kayak facilities in the north end of Frog Island Park. Uh this is uh one of the um Michigan NDNR Um rules that they had to have the public hearing separate from the uh resolution of determination. So if you'd like to open up the public hearing now, and then that would be the first resolution in section nine.
Yes, if you would open, the public hearing is open.
Okay, any member of the public that wished wishes to make comment regarding this grant application, please indicate by raising your hand, you'll have three minutes to make comment. Seeing no hands raised on in in the attendees list. I'll go ahead and read the uh closure of the public hearing. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the public hearing for an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, Natural Resources Trust Fund for the Frog Island Trailhead Project be officially closed.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
I.
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 Thank you, that public hearing is closed. Discussion on the um resident, on the ordinance?
Well, council, this was just for the public hearing, if you would like to, you could have discussion now, but that is a resolution under section nine, if you'd like to wait for that.
So we can't bring the resolution up to here?
No, the resolution has to be in a separate section from the public hearing per.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
So I will move forward with the consent agenda. Okay. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the following resolute and following items be approved, resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero five five approving the minutes of March second twenty twenty one. Resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero five six declaring March as reading month in the city of Ypsilanti. Resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero five seven approving the purchase of a twenty twenty one Ford Police Interceptor.
Moved.
Support.
They moved and supported.
Council, I'll read the rule on this, councilmember Morgan. Councilmember Morgan. Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
And just to clarify, I did hear you say yes, councilmember Morgan.
Yes, you did, thank you.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Can I ask a question about that?
About the consent agenda?
No, just about the um large purchases in general of similar items. I can wait also.
Yeah, there's no discussion on the consent. All right, resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero five eight resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city strongly supports safe and equitable recreation access for all of its residents and visitors. And whereas the adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan recognizes the need for improved accessibility in our parks, Particularly Frog Island Park, and whereas Frog Island presents a nexus between the border to border trail, Part of the Iron Bell Trail and Hereon River Water Trail. And whereas the parking and stormwater drainage facility serving Frog Island need to be upgraded to meet current accessibility standards And protect the water quality of the Hereon River. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby authorize Authorizes the submission of a development application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. Natural Resources Trust Fund in the amount of up to five hundred thousand dollars for the Frog Island Trailhead Project To be matched by sources to be determined, including private donations, city funds, and other public grant support.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, uh Ms. Westler, talk to us.
Good evening, council. Good evening. Sure if somebody's gonna say good evening back, so I never know when to pause, thank you, everybody.
Good evening.
Last call, anybody else? Um so before us, we have a uh resolution regarding a grant proposal for the north end of Frog Island. As we all know, Frog Island serves a number of purposes in our community, not just for recreation, but the large parking area serves also the depot town commercial area. This grant application would allow us to provide, or this grant, rather, I should say, if we were to receive it And provided match comes through, which we are still in the process of pursuing, Would allow us not only to provide a lot of accessibility upgrades at that north end of the park. We've done a lot in the past year, especially with the help of the Washington County Parks and Recreation Commission. But we can do more to make the parking lot accessible to the trail. Uh to make the trail accessible to the existing canoe and kayak launch. To provide a designated place for fishing, uh potentially distinct from the canoe and kayak launch. Uh to actually maybe provide some signage, helping people know that there is a canoe and kayak launch there. Perhaps even some directional signage, helping direct them around like to the border to border trail, To the various pieces of the park, um and to the depot town commercial area. But one of the coolest things this would probably do would be to pave that Existing uh gravel parking area there that is not only completely inaccessible, it doesn't Do anything for our stormwater capacity in our parks, there's a lot of sediment there, a lot of Gunk, for lack of a better word, that just washes directly into the river. So we can do a lot of improvements with stormwater control there. And we can probably roughly double the amount of parking that is provided there. So there's a lot of great things that we hope to uh achieve with this grant application that It's a kind of an interesting grant application, because we're not really Asking for anything new, we are improving significantly, improving what's already there. And that's it.
Thank you, any questions, yes, Ms. Simmons.
I just want to say, it's very exciting, um I I'm excited about the prospects of what this might bring, so thanks so much for The work on this, and yeah, I'm excited about it.
Ms. Somerville.
Yeah, um same for me, I'm really excited to see this grant application, I really hope that we um are awarded this. Um it will be, bring some much needed improvements to Frog Island, which is my favorite park in the entire city, so.
I got one question.
For all of your hard work, Bonnie.
Okay. Mr. Morgan.
Uh Bonnie, is there a cost associated with the grant application, is there a deadline of any sort we should be aware of?
So the deadline to apply is April first, um then it kind of goes into Uh the review period with the DNR. We have the opportunity to make updates to our grant application generally in August, so if we receive additional match. Uh we have some loosey goosey commitments right now, but nothing really that we can write down. Um and some other grants that we're pursuing that would also support this project, so by then we'll be able to update the project Or update the application rather. As well as um You know, provide any additional cost estimates there as well. So um and then we'll hear if we get the grant by December. Oh, and one thing I would like to point out, so the resolution does uh ask for, ask that we'll Apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars, um I have triple checked, I've got a little bit of back and forth information with the changes that are happening to the trust fund Uh program with the passage of proposal A, I think it was last year. Um but they uh informed me that the cap for the grant amount is going to stay firm at three hundred thousand, so that is currently the amount that we plan To apply for with this round. So we'll come December.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Uh Mr. Helanga, would you call the row, please?
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. This is going to be exciting to Have that um Work being done down at Frog Island. Next on the agenda, please.
Council, next resolution on the agenda is resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero five eight A. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has hit the city of Ypsilanti and our businesses extremely hard. And whereas public health guidance indicates that outdoor dining is safer than indoor dining and consumers preferred these outdoor spaces in twenty twenty. And whereas the city seeks to assist in recovery of our small businesses and help encourage best practices that support our local economy. And whereas unique conditions that surround and its stakeholders offers an opportunity for a longer street closure. And now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council amends a special event permit, closing North Washington Street from Pearl to Michigan Avenue From April first twenty twenty one until November first twenty twenty one. The closures would remain in fact during overnight hours, live amplified music is only permitted on Fridays and Saturdays until ten P M.
Their motion?
So moved.
Gets. They moved and supported. Questions, discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I just want to make sure the live music is Friday, Saturday with a permit, correct? This might be a Christopher question.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
We are requiring the noise permit special event application for each of the uh the nights where there is live music.
Cool, I just wanted to make sure it was the same for both.
Yep.
Uh can I ask a question, this is for an extension, what was the original time set for the street closure?
May fifteenth, May fifteenth to October fif- uh sixteen.
Wow.
So from six months to eight months?
April to November, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, seven months.
Okay.
Six weeks early.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Somerville.
Yeah, I'll just quickly say that um I spoke with Christopher and um I didn't speak directly with the mayor, but we kind of, I think, chatted through Christopher a little bit, um and there After talking with some of the business owners, um and just like looking at some of the restrictions that the downtown businesses have. They don't have the ability to expand out either in their parking lot or in their existing patio spaces and on sidewalks, Much like the other businesses, um and the situation on Washington's a lot different than um Cross Street, so That's kind of where where I have changed my mind a little bit and looking at the two as separate issues. Um So yeah, just wanted to add that background. Um like, for example, Bobcat Bonnies Can only really, like, right now, they have, like, three tables outside, um Ale House doesn't have any. I don't believe Thesee's does either, Ziggy's does not, they have a little bit of alley space, um So it really will help them kind of expand out earlier if they want to, i- it is going to be a lot more work for them, because the weather could still be cold in April, but We're obviously, that's, that's up to them, but um it will give them the ability to expand out if they want to.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. Oh.
I'll say my comment, uh and I don't want to sound callous, my my comment is um I think one of the biggest things that uh COVID did uh kill Is 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 some of And um and there have been a lot of businesses in different forms that have shut down and more Businesses also different ways that people have started on their own, so um it's just The expansion only will increase certain risk, although I think it will increase certain profits too, so um Again, I do think a lot of creativity has taken place with different types of businesses, um and I do think the base of the the ale house owner did.
Mr. Morgan, you keep muting yourself. You're muted right now.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but all.
You heard of what you were saying, but then you muted.
I I I'm gonna just get it, wrap it up in fifteen seconds, I I just think it's a It's imperative that I think we attempt to do everything we can to support The businesses while maintaining um, while while trying not to increase risk and being As fair as we can be to the businesses that exist in different forms, and I know the restaurant business is pretty unique Because people sit and gather and eat in different other restrictions that take place, so um I'll do my best to To reflect my view in the vote, but I appreciate everything that was said tonight.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Wilcoxen.
I have a question for Christopher Jacobs. Um in terms of last year, we uh In order to achieve equity with with uh within the city, there were other measures uh taking place with businesses that couldn't Uh capitalize on the street closures, and I was just wondering if there was anything else Um attached to that, it may not be appropriate. It's not directly relevant to this, but it is relevant to some extent.
Yeah, no, it's a great question, we were talking a lot more about this issue of equity uh when the vote came up the first time around Um to consider the street closures, I think it was June of twenty twenty, um and at that time, the DDA undertook a major infrastructure project in the West Cross area to repair an alley. That served a ton of businesses along that corridor, and I know that they've all Um made plans at the time to expand out into those um spaces created by the alley. And uh and I am working to to make sure that their outdoor cafe Um applications are processed by the building department, um and they have uh good solutions That increase their ability to to do outdoor dining um that they didn't have last year.
There's no need to have uh the side street by uh the tower closed and no timeframe for any of that, because it's off Street, they can do that when they want, is that, is that subject to um a season for cafe dining?
So um with regard to the side street, Royce, the guy um who runs the tower in, uh I talked to him pretty often, he's not interested in using that particular side street. Um now with regard to outdoor dining in private areas created maybe by the alley. You know, they could operate under the outdoor sidewalk cafe application Um during the timeframes that people are allowed in the right way typically. Um I suppose they could also do igloos, but we didn't see that this year, so I don't think there are any plans in the works that Beyond typical April to November timeframes.
Okay, thanks.
And a problem.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing and hearing none, would you call the row, please?
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one no vote. Motion carries with six yes and one no vote.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to Resolution Number twenty twenty-one zero five nine, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas Public Act Twenty of nineteen forty-three, M C L A one-two-nine-point-nine-one, as amended, Public Act Twenty authorizes a local unit to invest surplus funds in certain permissible investments. And whereas the Surplus Funds Investment Pool Act, number three-six-seven of the Public Acts of nineteen eighty-two, M C L one-two-nine-point-one-one, as amended, authorizes political subdivisions organized under the laws of the state of Michigan, including counties, cities, villages, townships, school districts, and other authorities to investor plus funds in certain investment pools. And whereas the Urban Cooperation Act of nineteen sixty-seven, nineteen sixty-seven, Public Act Four, number seven, M C L A one-two-four-point-five-zero-one, as amended, provides that two or more political subdivisions may jointly cooperate in the exercise or in the performance of their respective governmental functions, powers, or responsibilities, and may enter into such joint agreements as may be deemed appropriate for such purposes when such agreements have been adopted by all such cooperating political subdivisions. And whereas a declaration of trust, as amended, and an information statement relating to the Michigan Liquid Assets Fund Plus have been presented to this council, and whereas a declaration of trust, as amended, authorizes political subdivisions to adopt and enter into the declaration of trust and become participants of the fund. And whereas this council deems it advisable for the local unit to adapt and enter into the declaration of trust and become a participant of the fund for the purposes of joint investment of local units' money and those of other political subdivisions, so as to enhance the investment earnings accruing to each political subdivision, now therefore be it resolved as follows, the local unit shall join with other political subdivisions in accordance with the provisions of Public Act Twenty, the Surplus Funds Investment Pool Act, and Urban Cooperation Act of nineteen sixty-seven. As such laws are applicable by becoming a participant of a fund and entering in the declaration of trust, when the declaration of trust is adopted by reference thereto with the same effect as it had been set out verbatim in this resolution. A copy of the declaration of trust shall be filed with the minutes of the meeting at which this resolution was adopted. The local unit is hereby authorized to invest its available funds from time to time to withdraw such funds from time to time in accordance with the provision of the declaration of trust, the following officers and officials of the local unit authorized to take such actions and execute any and all documents as they may deem necessary and appropriate to effectuate the entry of the local unit into the declaration of trust and the adoption thereof by the local unit. Name Francis McMullin, city manager, Andrew Helanga, city clerk, Reagan Basabika, finance director, treasurer. The following offices and officials of the local unit and their respective successors in office, each are hereby designated as authorized officials with full power and authority to effectuate the investment and withdraw some monies of the local unit from time to time in accordance with the declaration of trust. Name Francis McMullin, city manager, Andrew Helanga, city clerk, Reagan Basabika, finance director, treasurer. The secretary of council shall advise the fund of any changes and authorize officials in accordance with the procedures established by the fund. The trustees of the fund are hereby designated as having official custody of local units' monies, which are invested in accordance with the declaration of trust. Authorization is hereby given for members of this council and officials of the local unit to serve as trustees of the fund from time to time if elected as such pursuant to the declaration of trust. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as a conflict with the provisions of this resolution being the same are hereby rescinded.
Okay, thank you. Zero motion?
So move.
Drinks.
The part of it.
Will one of you support? Okay, there was a support. It's been moved in second. Open for discussion or questions? Mr. Best, I always stumble over your name. Please help me with the correct pronunciation.
Basabika, there.
Basabika, okay, which, do you have something for, you want to share with us?
This resolution is just a requirement for us to be able to open an account with Michigan Liquid Assets Fund. So with this resolution, we'll be able to open that account and be able to diversify our surplus funds. So that's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, where are the surplus funds being held now?
We, we have four institutions that we currently invest in, so we have Michigan Class, we have Huntington Bank, Key Bank, and Bank of Fun Arbor.
And then how do these, in your opinion, how do these returns compare based on, you know, how often we deposit and withdraw funds?
With, with this fund, this is a little bit better than the banks offer because in the banks, we do invest in CDs. But in here, they're able to purchase, like in, like in bulk, investments, so they're able to get in more return or yield. So they're, they're a little bit better than our CDs.
Okay, so then, I mean, the yield here obviously still depends on, you know, the the length of time we're investing here, so how, how long would you say a dollar of surplus funds will, will spend in the fund and what do you anticipate maybe an average yield for us might be?
So for this fund, it's around point six percent currently yearly. So, you know, one million, I think it brings in currently just around six hundred dollars per, per year. In the past, we were getting like two percent, so. But with this fund, it's a little bit more liquid. Like for CDs, we have to invest like on the three months, six months, nine month CD. But with my life, these are liquid assets. We can put in our money in here and we are able to withdraw immediately and still our money would be earning interest based on our average holding in that account.
So the, the liquidity is worth the trade-off, so we're probably keeping money in less than six to nine months on average. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Is the intent to, to move all of it from those or it's just, it's just another fund that you can put money into?
Yeah, so we, we just want to diversify, so move some of our funds here.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing and hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Mayor Pro Tem had to step away. She will be back, though.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Basabika.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Council, moving on to the next resolution, Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash zero six zero, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has touched every individual living in the city, county, state, country, and planet. And whereas the Center for Disease Control has advised that wearing a mask and keeping socially distant will help stop the spread of COVID nineteen. And whereas Washtenaw County reported six hundred and thirty-three new cases of COVID nineteen the week of March fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, with one hundred and twenty-five of those diagnoses being in the four-eight-one-nine-seven, four-eight-one-nine-eight zip codes. And whereas the Michigan Legislature and governor have amended the Open Meetings Act to allow for no reason virtual meetings until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas opponents expiration, public bodies throughout the state will be forced to begin meeting in person, creating a risk to public health. And whereas the fear of exposure might limit the public's desire to participate in public meetings, lowering its involvement in decision-making processes at the local level, creating less transparency, the very reason for sunshine laws such as the Open Meetings Act. And now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council implore the Michigan State Legislature to adopt Senate Bill Two-zero-seven, and Governor Whitmer signed it into law, allowing for no reason virtual meetings until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Be it for the result that the Ypsilanti City Council direct the city clerk to forward this resolution to the Michigan House, Michigan Senate, and the Office of the Governor and the city's lobbyists.
So move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Comments, questions?
Nice to have the choice.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Council, Ms. Somerville?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, if, if this does move anywhere, it's probably going to happen next week before legislative spring break, just FYI, for everyone to know. I haven't heard anything, but I would imagine that if it's going to happen, it's going to happen next week.
Yes, well, at the conference today, one of the sessions I was in, it was, they were pretty much saying that they didn't think it was going to, going to move in Lansing, so. Also stating that it had to move before the break.
Yeah.
Next week. Councilmember Son Simmons?
I read today that Washtenaw County was going to declare something for us, so that would express, which, you know, so at least there was that, I guess, but I'm hoping right at this state level, they do something, so.
Yes, I, I did receive an email from the Washtenaw County Clerk's Office that the Board of Commissioners does intend to pass a resolution that will extend or that will declare a state emergency in the county and that will sunset at the end of the year. But it'd be nice if the state legislature took action.
Right.
Agreed.
Yes. It would be especially nice, particularly for Washtenaw County, because if they, unless they've worked out something out, if they declare an emergency, they have to, it changes what their pay scale for several departments, so that's why I know before they were really wanting the state to act, and I really, I just believe that this is something that should come from the state as opposed to each individual municipality or county passing a passing a resolution, so. Okay, any other discussion, comments? Okay, seeing that, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
She stepped away, remember?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absent.
Thank you.
All right, council, moving on to Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash zero six one, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the International Transgender Day of Visibility was founded by U S-based transgender activist Rachel Crandall of Michigan in two thousand and nine. And whereas the proposed purpose of Transgender Day of Visibility is a time to celebrate transgender and non-binary people through, around the globe and acknowledge the courage it takes to live openly and authentically. And whereas activists use this day to bring awareness of the discrimination and violence that trans people face. And whereas the Human Rights Campaign recorded forty-four deaths of transgender and non-binary people in two thousand and twenty as a result of violence. And whereas these victims, like all of us, were loving partners, parents, family members, friends, and community members. And whereas transgender and non-binary people face significant cultural, legal, and economic challenges, but continue to bravely share their stories and push for equality. And whereas it is on all of us to fight for a change at every level and take action to support transgender and gender non-conforming people. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council recognizes March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one as International Transgender Visibility Day and vow to continue the fight to achieve equality and inclusion for all people.
So move, support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion? Comments? Mr. Wilcoxen?
Um, I've had the the privilege of, of hosting a number of people in transition, teenagers in transitions in my house, when they were not necessarily disowned by their family, but, but close to that. And, and it's a real travesty to have, have young people seeking their way in the world and trying to figure things out and, and having lost all the support of, of their families. And I know that our community has, has a lot of mixed emotions about this, but, you know, having, having you know, provided shelter and support to, to a number of people going through the transition. I think this is a very significant thing and I, and I hope we can pass this.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown? Councilmember Morgan?
Abstain.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes votes, one absent, and one abstention. Council, moving on to the next resolution, Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash zero six two, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the Michigan Vintage Volkswagen Club has submitted application to hold its annual festival in Riverside Park on June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, a month following the normal date of the first weekend in May, the festival is usually held. And whereas in exchange for postponing their event, they asked that the city lower their rental fees to a, to a class-two level, lowering the fees by two hundred dollars. And whereas the sponsors have agreed to adhere to social distancing and mask protocols, and now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the city manager is authorized to approve a special events application with contingencies to allow the annual vintage Volkswagen festival to occur in Riverside Park on June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Be it for the result that sponsors agree to monitor the public and to comply with any additional measures as required by the city.
So move.
Still support?
Support.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and supported. City Manager McMullin, you want to talk to us?
Sure, this resolution is based on the communication I brought at the last meeting. We received an application from the vintage Volkswagen sponsors to have their annual car show in Ypsilanti. They originally wanted their day of the day. However, I just listened to what I heard last, the last meeting from council and proposed to them to move it out a month, and they decided that they would. They know that we are requiring that they adhere to strict PPP, P P E guidelines. And so they know that it's up to council, it's council's decision. We did agree to compromise and scale it down to a, to a number-two event, which basically is less people and it's also less money for them. They usually, we usually, any event that's held in Riverside Park, we usually make it a level-three just because of, you know, the capacity that it could hold, but typically this event has Just because of, you know, the capacity that it could hold, but typically this event has not. Been as large, so we did agree to. Let them have it as a level two event, and so here it is before you again, we had a discussion. And it's basically for council to consider, are we at the point where we want to allow? You know, some festivals at some degree, and I think this is a pretty safe one. In the resolution, I did write with contingencies as required by council or staff. Because I'm thinking of additional restrictions as far as parking the cars. You know, a little bit farther apart to allow space. Having them to wipe down the handles, you know, and and just some extra things. To make. It's safe for the people that attend, that's if council so desires to pass this resolution on tonight. And I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Hey, Ms. Somerville.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions, I appreciate the resolution and I'm glad that they were. Supportive of moving it out a month because I feel much more comfortable supporting this in June than May. The month makes the difference for me, because I was most concerned about just like vaccine rollout in general and then just like the numbers and I think. Last June was was better for all of us in terms of overall COVID numbers and I think with the vaccine rollout and the announcement at. With the, you know, the big site at Ford Field and then all the additional measures at Washtenaw County. I feel comfortable assuming that more folks will have had access by the end of May. So that's all I wanted to add, and I appreciate the city manager for preparing this and and working with the the folks. That way we don't just have to say no, I like that we were able to compromise with them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I have a question, oh, Mr. Jones Chance, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm still concerned. You know, we are still in a pandemic and it's not really much better than this time. Though it's said in, you know. A month from now, last year. It it feels more normal, but that doesn't make it any safer, and you know, I've got. People to worry about staff and we have citizens who live. In Depot Town and in downtown around the park or who work there, and these folks are gonna have to go into these. Businesses and use the bathroom, eat, and it's a lot of folks from out of town. We don't know their vaccine history, we don't know their, and we don't know what it's gonna look like in June. And I don't, I I don't know how much revenue we're generating from this, but. It's hard for me to square people's health with any dollar amount. And I just don't see how it's worth it to risk people's health and safety unnecessarily. Sure, they'll be spread out, but it's a car show, you know, they're gonna be poking their heads under hoods and. While we may tell them, or the organizers may tell them, you know, to. Social distance and wear masks, I mean, I've seen so many noses this month that it just like drives me crazy. Hanging out of people's masks, it's ridiculous, we have. Health officials and government officials telling people to wear masks, practice social distancing. And we've still got two or three liquor licensees being closed a month for not following the basic rules. We have sixteen seventeen, I don't know how many states now, with no mask mandate at all. We can't rely on government officials. I just, I can't see that it's worth it until we know that we are at a safe level and we're just not there yet. And I don't know what it's gonna look like in June, I mean, I I hope it's safe. But I just don't think the juice is worth the squeeze.
I appreciate those comments, I kind of equate the same thing to outdoor dining, where you have to take off your mask. But we wanna support our businesses, we want our downtown, and so it's really going to be. A decision for council to to make, because they're 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 the same to me, maybe not.
Appreciate that, I mean, the difference for me is that in one instance you are stationary, and another you're walking around. And you're getting close to people you don't live with, and you know, in the restaurants, you need to stay in groups that are. Separate from people that you live with in a car show, I mean, the kind of the appeal is that you are looking at other people's stuff from. Their house and presumably they are also there from their house. Not that I'm a hundred percent comfortable with that either, but you know. Maybe there are no right answers, but it just doesn't seem, doesn't feel good.
We're gonna have to eventually just police ourselves because there's a lot of people that are not comfortable, even with First Fridays that we allowed, you know, we allowed it. And so I think it's gonna become a point where we're gonna have to police ourselves and we're going to have to be cautious of what we do personally. Because things are gonna open up all over, the grocery stores have been open, you know, they've been packed. You can, you know, no one is really six feet, but you have to go in there, and I'm just throwing out examples, I'm not for or against it. But I'm saying ultimately, we're had to police ourselves and we're gonna have to wear masks, wash our hands, use sanitizer. These are the things that we have to do ourselves and. All we can do is require them to have sanitizing stations and things of that nature, masks and things available for the people. But ultimately. You know, some people choose not to even wear masks, period. So it's up to council, whatever you'd like to do, but I did want to bring you. The latest update of their application to give you a chance to say what you'd like to see in the city. Thank you, Mr. Ground, your hand back up.
You know, I appreciate the, yeah, yes, eventually we're gonna have to police ourselves. But this is a communicable disease, I mean, if you don't police yourself, you can hurt someone else. And, you know, we have a way to prevent it, which is not. Allowing events that aren't one hundred percent, that aren't necessary, and yes, you do have to go to the grocery store, but you don't have to go to a Volkswagen Festival. You know, people are policing themselves in Texas and in Mississippi and in Georgia, it's not going well. I don't think we should invite it here, that's just my opinion, I I'm pretty sure I know, I'm pretty sure I already know how this is gonna go, so.
I don't know how it's, I don't know how it's going to go, I think in order to ensure total safety, we should have nothing. If you were to ask me, we shouldn't have outdoor dining, we shouldn't have anything, but we do. And so I I don't see how we can pick and choose all of this and not that and this and not that, I think we can. We could look at the level that we allow, but I think when you start allowing things, that's when you start to get, you know. And now we've expanded the time tonight for outdoor, you know, it's gonna be open even more, you know, even longer. For more months, like seven months, almost eight months, so. This is the way that it is, and I have the business owners that are in support because they want people to come down and support their businesses. You know, some had to close because of lack of business. And people feel that if it's outside, it's safer than being inside. But they're gonna have to make that decision, council will have to make that decision tonight if you are willing to take that step. To begin, you know, take this small step, I I do plan on bringing to council. Each application because there are some that are mega fast and I don't think we're ready for those. But I'll still bring them because it's not my, I I don't wanna make that decision on my own. I'm gonna listen to council and I and I believe that council is listening to their constituents. So that is all I have, and whatever you guys say, that is what I will carry out. Mr. Wilcoxen.
I'm just curious about the the change in level, I I don't know what the numbers are for class two and class three, if you could give more information on that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, and so basically, it's it's usually the number of people, but but all events that we allow in Riverside Park. We make them a level three, just because they have access to so much space. But it may not be the number of attendees, so a level two has less attendees. And but we just make them go in Riverside Park because they have the cars and, you know. People are are spread out all all across the park, so.
Is there a number, I mean, less than a hundred and fifty people or something like that that classifies it as a class two versus class three?
No, I don't think so, I don't have that number with me, I'm sorry, but. No, I don't, I I know it's much more than that. Much more than that. I can get that number to you, I don't, I just don't have that number. But really a class two is what fits this, but. Since it's gonna be Riverside Park, as I said, every event that utilizes that park. We make it a low three, past three. Anyone else, Mr. Morgan, Ms. Simmons? Okay, I have a question. With the county's new. Emergency. State of emergency, and we had. Discuss possibly declaring one for our, for the city as a standalone, but since the county has done that. How does that affect? Or does it affect the opening, the the permitting of the. Festival or what restrictions are there? Based on the state of emergency?
So we won't know until they declare it. What they're actually gonna tie it to. I do know that. They are not having any gatherings, I know, on U of M campus, those kind of things, they've already said no to. So I I'd have to look at the details when when he declares it.
And if they don't declare it. I do, I do plan to declare a state of emergency for the city. And so, Mr. Bauer, if we may, if I may ask you what, and that was one of the. Things I wanted to discuss with you before we actually do declare, what. Will be allowed and what won't be allowed once that state. Is declared.
Well, that will depend, Mayor, on how we structure it, the the way I've got it structured right now. Is that it would require social distancing, mask wearing and so on, and but allow virtual meetings. It would not discourage. Meetings out in the open, and I think there are state guidelines on that, but they're all ending, I think. The end of March, so this is a work in progress and. Where the, all of the city attorneys are talking about it, I know Ann Arbor is looking at it, there's been some chatter on the listserv. I'll be very interested in seeing what the county does, but once we get closer, we can, closer to the end of this month. We'll have to make a decision.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Halanga.
In the email that I forwarded council around five fifteen today, there was a link toward to the resolution that the. County Board of Commissioners will be reviewing on March seventeenth, and it does not appear that it it limits. Outdoor gathering, it's mostly geared towards allowing for virtual meetings.
And the state has said that outdoor gatherings can be up to three hundred, is that correctly, correct? Okay.
And usually the state supersedes the county.
Right, yeah.
After March thirty first.
But now if. If we say yes to this festival. How will we monitor the number of people that are in the park if there can only be three hundred?
So we won't be doing the monitoring, we would explain to them what the state requirements are. And we would ask them to monitor and not have more than three hundred people in the park at a time. So we would expect that they would funnel people through, you know, come in and look at the cars and and go and. And I've been talking about this and to see what that would look like, and they would have a counter, of course, and. We're anticipating that this would not be the normal, because I'll have to talk to them, this would not be the normal. Where you can just kind of come and casually just stay however long you want, you know, kind of thing unless you you haven't reached your capacity. They even do it in restaurants now, they tell you how long you have to be there, I don't know if anyone has encountered that. But, you know, you have like an hour and thirty minutes, and you know that's the amount of time that you need to circulate in and out of the restaurant. This is new for all of us, we're chartering new waters, so that might be something, you know, we could say you can only have three hundred, you know, once you reach that capacity. You can't let anyone in until others exit. So we're, you know, I we're making this up as they make up the law. And so that's the reason why the resolution is structured as such to say. And with contingencies, because there'll probably be more.
Mr. Wilcoxen.
Contingencies are an interesting part of this resolution, I mean, you know, given that we don't have the limits for the class two, we have the. The state level limits of three hundred people in in an event. I just wonder what. What all could be considered in the contingencies, I mean, if 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 things change with guidelines from the from the county. And from the state within that period, we approve this now, it's June thirteenth, things change. Does that contingency clause in here give us? A legal out to to postpone this or. To modify the the timing on this at all?
Well, I would, I would think that the contingency was would basically deal with health and safety. You know, which is wear your mask, six feet apart, you need a counter, you need to monitor people. That that kind of thing, I I wouldn't say that if they changed, you know, if they changed it. To go lower than three hundred, is that what you are you saying?
Oh, just in general, I'm just I'm just questioning what all you could put in those contingencies, I mean, you know.
Well, the state is moving toward opening up, unless it really, you know, does something. Crazy, because I think as of April, beginning of April, everyone can go and get a shot, so. They're looking at, you know, opening things back up. And I I don't have all the answers, I don't pretend to have the answers. I I'm just looking at what we can do to make sure that people that attend will be safe. And so we would, we would attach every kind of thing that we could to. Their checkoff sheet that they must have. And we've done our part to ensure. The safety, I mean, we're supposed to wear masks outside now, but people don't wear them, I mean. There's no, there's no penalty for it. So we will do our best and. And that's all I believe that we can do and we can require them to do all these things to make sure that the people that come are safe and are offered. You know, these mechanisms for safety, we'll tell them you have to have masks too, you have to have, of course, they know they need porta potties. I I heard Mr. Jones Chance.
Um, I I heard Mr. Jones' chance that they're gonna be going into other restaurants. Uh, we we do make, we do require, I should say, that the events provide. Uh, porta johns for the, their event. So it will be as such.
You know, it's hard to. Hard to deliberate on this because, because in the transition, there is gonna be. A cognitive dissonance in in i- associated with the transition. Because, you know, the state is gonna say one thing, the county's gonna say something else. We're, we're. Doing our due diligence to to protect. Our community and and the folks that come here. And, you know, those things are not always gonna be aligned and and we're seeing that. We're absolutely. You know, very different things, you know, and the the rationale that applies to people in restaurants versus people in the parks and. You know, if we look at, if we look at Riverside Park on any given day, you know, I was down in Frog Island today, it's like, there's a lot of people out there. You know, there was an event on, you know, International Women's Day, there was a lot of people in Frog Island and they were all masked and they were, you know. Behaving themselves. But it just seems, you know, there's, there's gonna be this period where where some people say yes, some people say no, and there's a lot of people saying, I don't know. And that's.
That that event was not a, an event that um, you know, we permitted, you know?
Right, no, no, they just gathered. They just showed up and, you know, people were playing music and there were a number of people there, but. You know, there's, there's just gonna be that, that unknown period going forward. This, I I like the fact that this was moved into June. I would have liked September, but you know, that's not what was negotiated, so. And, you know, with more people, you know, more people getting vaccines or being eligible for vaccines. June thirteenth doesn't, doesn't sound like an unreasonable time at this point. But, you know, I'm, I'm always on the conservative end for people getting infected, so. I don't know.
I just have one comment. With, uh, uh, it seems one thing that's consistent and sure that the, 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 the. The state wants us as local officials not to meet face to face until December. So they made that decision pretty clear. And so for us not to do, for us to still do virtual. That, so clearly the threat still exists for uh, government officials to do work with our constituents in the same space. So for for that to be so far out into the future, i- if I, if I, am I saying that correct?
Um, no, that's inside, though. We're talking about.
I know, I know, I get it. But but again, the decision was made. That even, e- e- even if I think in my own mind that it's enough room for the people who govern. For us to provide six feet and still do our job face to face inside. Um, without people there who could virtually tune in like they're doing now. So there are creative ways to do things inside. Like eating inside, we're talking about restaurants and stuff still, whereas arbitrary uh, standards. What I'm saying, that's still till December twenty, thirty first. So that's consistent, that's concrete that.
Not December. Andrew, what is the date?
March thirty first.
March.
Is this March here? So we're meeting after this March thirty first? I I thought I saw something that said.
Right, it's March, and so that is the reason why local governments. Or county governments need to uh, declare a state of emergency so that we can allow. You know, we can meet virtually still. The state is saying after March thirty first, you, you, you meet.
I must have read it wrong, uh, but I strike that comment for the record. I thought that, I thought I saw something that mentioned that we were gonna be meeting virtually until December. If that's not the case, uh, this is a neat point. Um, I still think we need standards that only we can create locally and um, in this event being moved to June. I still think that's an arbitrary move, uh, whether it's June, July, or September, the same uh. Risk will still exist and we'll still have to find creative ways to get around. So, that's my comment.
Mr. Morgan, you did hear uh, virtual until December thirty first. That was with the county. The proposed county uh, call of emergence, state of emergency. And it was extended, yes. So you did hear that.
So it was, it was extended until then for the county?
That's what the county is proposing, yes.
Okay, okay, that's what I, okay, so forgive me for the misinformation, but I thought. So yeah, so again, so some people looking that far ahead to.
Vote on it. They still have to vote on it, or is he just declaring?
No, I'm just saying, regardless, I just think they're being preemptive enough that far in advance to determine what they think is safe. And I think we have to do the same thing here. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? I've been sitting there. I I tend to lean. Towards the real conservative side and. I'm just concerned and wondering also if where we're actually going to be come June. I know that they said that there's gonna be enough vaccines for everyone by May. But however, uh, having vaccines and having them in people's arms are two different things, so. It just leaves me concerned about whether or not. This group would police themselves enough to only have, to stay within the three hundred limit, you know, so. But anyway, those are, that's my, those are my thoughts. Okay, council, are you ready to vote? Okay, seeing no hands or hearing. No comments, yes. Uh, Mr. Wilcox, and did you just say yes? Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Halanga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Simmons?
Can you come back to me, please?
Mr. Jones' chance?
No.
Councilmember Wilcox?
No.
Mayor Prutam Brown? Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
So I'm going to abstain as a former member of this organization.
Okay, with one yes, four no, one absence, and one abstention, the motion fails.
Thank you. We will let them know. And I think that we'll probably just end up just canceling all of them because this is like. One of the most, the lightest ones that we we have. So I think I will just probably do that rather than just bringing each one back to council. Because I see what the sentiments of council, what it is. And so I'll probably declare something like I did last year. That there will be no special events. And then that'll make it just easier and we won't have to go through this every time.
I do wanna say for the record that, that, I think each one is his own individual, independent, like I think if the city was to.
This is one of the smaller ones, Anthony.
I'm saying if the city was to do one and we could regulate it and we could make sure that the, the things were upheld, not leaving outside company to do it. I would feel comfortable. So everyone is his own, in my opinion. Um, but thank you for taking the message to them.
I think they're the same whether we police or somebody else police. We don't have people to pay overtime to police. Policing is policing. And so people are gonna have to police themselves whenever. And I I don't think we've ever done anything like that before, um, when we actually, the city went out. To uh, police an event, to make sure that the people were doing what they were supposed to do. And I would hate to try to show favoritism. I think if we wanna go out and make sure one is doing, we should make, do the same thing for others. So um, if council is comfortable with that, I believe I will go ahead and say. That we will not have any special events this summer.
Uh, Mr. Wilcox.
I'm just, I'm just curious about the time component for this because, you know, if we. If we find that the, the, the vaccination schedule actually uh, complies with the projections. You know, would it be possible to have things in August and September and October? Compared to June and July in in a climate where, you know.
But we don't know who's getting the vaccination, that's the thing.
Well, right. And so if people are traveling from out of state and things like that, then then that certainly causes uh.
Absolutely.
A question for that. I get that. And, you know, yeah. So many, so many variables in this. Uh, I don't think there's a good formula for coming up with a, uh, an answer for.
I agree, I.
For these things, but, you know.
Uh, yeah, I see it. I'm just, he's talking. I was trying to let her know I saw it. Yes, uh, Ms. Simmons.
Yeah, I mean, um, city manager, I appreciate the work you did with them. I mean, I I personally would have voted no. I felt I should be saying as I used to be a member. Of this group. Um, but because I I agree, it's hard to police. People at this stage and I'm kind of tired of it, to be honest. And, I mean, again, I'm more conservative too with myself. I I, I, you know. Um, but I agree with you too. I, um, you know, this is probably is one of our smaller events. And if we don't feel like we could, you know, potentially do this in June, then, you know, I I would hate to have you and other city staff. You know, doing a lot of work, then we're just gonna say no because we're worried about people being adults. And, y- you know, the, the way, I would have voted yes for this. To be, knowing that if the things change and they got worse. Um, or, you know, there's some drastic change or something that we could always say, sorry, it's canceled, right? I mean, we have that ability to do that. And so knowing that, you know, I guess, you know, voting on the side of optimism of, yes, it's looking like we could do this. It's one of the smaller events. Um, and and kind of going for it, but. I understand, I mean, I think it's a shame, but I, I mean, right, we have to do what makes sense for um, public health and and actually I don't want you. And staff wasting your time. But I appreciate the work you did and I think it was probably. But worth, worth the risk, you know, that uh, we could have, you know, maybe tried this one, knowing that we could always cancel it. Um, not that we'd wanna try to, you know, do something like that for a group if we needed to. So anyway, um, thanks for the work. I understand why you, you're asking us for that answer and I, you know, curious to see what others feel. Uh, because if we, you know, don't think we could have pulled this one off in June, you know, why would we think we could do any of the much larger? Events like Beer Fest and whatever the heck, so.
Absolutely. So we will, I will have something posted on the um, website. And I will also let our special events coordinator know that we will not have any, and so we won't have to go through this until. Um, maybe next year. And I won't even have to bring it. Hopefully things will be better. So thank you for your time. I appreciate.
I have a question. Does this include weddings also?
Uh, they would have to stay within a certain guideline, the set, a certain number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your work.
There are certain things that are allowed, just allowed, if you stay within the number, so.
Mr. Morgan, are you planning a wedding this summer?
Oh, man, no. I wish.
Uh, I'd just like to say, uh, thanks to uh, to you two city managers for. Uh, your diligence and for staff's diligence in pursuing this and. Just want everybody to be safe. So, and we don't want um, people. So many people will be coming in and we don't know what they're bringing with them, so. But thank you for the work that you did on it and thanks to the staff. And I know it wasn't an easy um, job, so. Thank you. All right, uh, next, Mr. Halanga.
Can I just, can I just?
Oh, wait, yes.
Give you a nod to your wisdom for the time frame earlier. I was like, no, we'll get done by ten o'clock. I was like, yeah, no, no, that's not gonna happen.
Right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Alanga.
Uh, council, the next item on the agenda is a discussion on returning to in-person meetings. It, it, the memo is fairly self-explanatory. If if we were to go back following the uh, March thirty first deadline. This is just what, what our course of action would be. But from the, the sounds of what the county plans on doing and if not the county, then uh. Uh, the mayor, I don't think this will be necessary. However, I just wanted to have a plan in place and just in case uh, uh, we needed to make these purchases.
All right, thank you. Okay, I think we've. I think we've discussed that roundabout enough, uh, unless someone has something. Mr. Wilcox, and did you have something you wanted to say on this? Okay. All right, uh, thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is just scheduling evaluations uh, for the city manager and the city clerk.
And I will call upon Ms. Simmons for that, please.
Yeah, hi, um, hopefully my, my dogs just decided it's time to wrestle because I have to talk, so hopefully they'll be quiet. Um, yeah, so I I guess next steps are, um, whether or not it's gonna be during, um, right, a closed session or open session. Um, and these are the parts where I'm still newer to. And um, city manager, um, you were interested in doing that as a closed session?
Yes.
Okay. And Clerk Halanga, I don't know what your desire was. I don't believe you.
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll be doing closed session as well.
Okay, so since that's, um, you know, wh- what uh, they would like. I'm not sure what happens next, because again, this is the part where I'm still new to, so someone else fill me in.
Okay, here's where we would uh, set two. Separate um, meetings, preferably, um, if we can, on the same night. That they would be closed sessions, that we would meet with uh, each one individually. And go over the evaluations and um. That, you know, Mr. Alanga, am I?
With the, the virtual platform, I would prefer that the, the um, evaluations ha- happen on separate nights. Just so I'd be able to leave for Frances's and then she'd be able to leave for mine. It'd be too difficult to try to uh. Try to do that on my end.
Okay, to do two, to do both of them on the same night, it would be, you're saying, it would be.
I I have to lock the meeting and then I'd, I'd have to leave and then I wouldn't be able to rejoin the meeting in order to open it, so.
Oh, okay, all right, I understand. So, but wait, so you wouldn't have to do that on the same?
I would not, if, if we were to adjourn to a closed session for the city manager. And then that finish, then I would not be able to come back in the meeting to open it again.
Could we do yours first?
Make someone else the host when I leave, so I can't rejoin the meeting.
Okay, so if we have a closed session for the city manager. On a Tuesday night at six o'clock. Then we could not have one for you at, on Tuesday night at seven o'clock, is what you're saying.
Evaluations be following the meeting, that would be the easiest way to do this.
Oh, no, I was talking about a separate night. I wasn't talking about on the meeting night, on a meeting night.
You want, you wanna have a, a separate meeting. In the past, they've always just followed or been a part of a regular meeting.
Well, we've done them both. I've, I've been where we've done them both ways, but Mr. Barr.
In, in the past, it's been just the employee, the clerk or the manager and the city council. With no other staff. And I think what Andrew was saying is, since he is kind of the. Conduit for the meetings, it may be difficult, so we may have to rethink that.
Okay, Ms. Simmons.
Uh, yeah, I understand. Um, I think Clerk Colanga was saying, I was just wondering if we did it on the same night, it was just, we're just doing the two evaluations. If Clerk Colanga's went first and then he locked the meeting or however that works and then left, w- would that work if we did it that way?
Yeah, that, that actually would work if you wanted to do that. If we're doing just a, a meeting just for the evaluations.
Right.
Yeah, we can do that.
And how, how long do these, how long do, have they traditionally lasted kind of for each um, person?
We did it on the same night of a meeting normally, so.
But the ki- I mean, is it usually a half an hour or an hour or is this three hours? I I just don't know, you know?
Yeah, actually. I always had my, I think I had always had my open. Where I just, what I, what, what would happen is I would accept the um, evaluation as submit, as submitted. And then they would, you know, make a motion and that was it. Um, I know our previous city manager, he had a closed one and so. When it's closed, I, you know, as the clerk, I wasn't privy to it, so I don't know how long it went.
Well, you were there for that one, uh, Councilmember Simmons. And in the past, when I remember. Well, you were there for that one, uh, Councilmember Simmons, and in the past, when I remember, they vary, you know? Uh, depends upon how much the employee or the council has to, you know, to discuss. I don't know, remember any going past an hour in my, you know, experience, so. I, and probably, I would say, the, the night of a council meeting, if we were not virtual, you know, but being virtual, I just thought if we had one night and did the two back to back, but however, council wants.
Is this like a call and response, like a, like a go back and forth, or is it just, they, we, we, we give them the, the evaluations, and they take them as our, and, and with some, with some feedback, and that's it, or are they explaining themselves, standing, making a position? So is it just, we're offering something, and that's what it is, or is it a back and forth?
It's a co- it's a discussion, they're, they're free to, uh, you know, to talk about it, uh, they're free to question, they're free to, you know, respond. Okay, all right, uh, yes, Councilmember Simmons.
Oh, I, I mean, a- and I'm happy if you want to be the guide point for that part of the meeting, I'm, I'm happy to just, if that's somehow helpful, but, you know, whatever people are comfortable, but yeah, I mean, I was also wondering if, if it was desirable to have it on the same, you know, night as a council meeting, like we do one-on-one council, you know, and we do it maybe before the meeting, could they be set up as separate Zooms, because they're gonna be closed session anyway, so, a separate Zoom, Andrew, and then, you know, then we've got our normal city council one, does that make sense, and somehow that's easier, if from a, you know, scheduling and availability standpoint, it's easier for people to come earlier on a, um, you know, on a council night versus another night of the week?
Um, th- that's, I don't know if we can use, because there should be one meet, one link per meeting, correct, Mr. Barr?
Well, it has to be an open meeting to start with.
Right.
Going to a closed session.
Could it be two, could it be two sep- could it be two meetings on one night, I'm just saying, say we did, um, Clerk Colunga's evaluation at, starting at six P M, um, you know, and it, and, you know, and so that would be a separate meeting, we'd go into closed session with that one, separate Zoom link, um, noticed, I guess, separately, because I guess we still, even though it's gonna be closed session, we have to notice that, and then the regular meeting would be, you know, a separate Zoom link, I, I don't know if that's easier from a scheduling standpoint, I hate to ask, you know, our staff, you know, to come in on another night, because they work, you know, so many other nights, and, you know, so if it's somehow more convenient, I'm okay with, with an earlier meeting to, to accomplish this, so.
Uh, two separate meetings?
Well, no, I was talking about, from the technology standpoint, setting them up as separate meetings, but just doing, you know, say it's like six P M, but it's set up in Zoom as a separate meeting, so that Clerk Colunga can lock down and close out the meeting as he would need to for, um, city manager McMullin's meeting, I've just, I was trying to figure out a technology solution.
So if, what I would suggest is just have them at the end of a regular meeting, we're all, we would al- already be present, and then I, if, if in the, if, if the city manager said the, I guess, i- if, in the past, when she was a city clerk, if she just accepts the evaluation, I don't mind just accepting my evaluation as submitted.
Yeah, I've never gone through, you know, line by line, um, so, and I'm not anticipating that unless council wants to go line by line, but in the past, um, I've never had to do that, if I had a question, um, or if someone wanted to s- suggest something, you know, that we kind of took it that way, and then I accepted the, the, uh, evaluation, just as Andrew was saying. So, i- it could be a point where it's not necessary for, you know, all of that, um.
So at the end of the, of a meeting, then, we'll just do, would we just do one e- each night, so, you know, or do they, would, you know, I guess we would just do one on one night, one on another, city council night?
That's fine.
Okay, works for me.
Mr. Wilcox.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, uh, what I do with my staff, and, you know, it's just like, there's, there's a dialogue going on, there's seven, eight people involved in this dialogue, and, you know, it's just like, setting a time limit, for one thing, and, and I'm not sure that, you know, it's going on, it's after ten o'clock now, and we put this at the end of a meeting, you know, is that the, the state of mind we want to be in, in terms of giving feedback to, to these two important people in our, in our, uh, community? Um, yeah, I, I'd, I'd be more inclined to do a separate meeting with, uh, with a time limit for each one of them, and, and and go from there, you know, if, if the logistics of having, um, Andrew go first, then I, I'd say, make it on an off Tuesday, and have, have a forty-five minute to an hour limit to each one of them, and, and then be done with it. Yeah, it may not take that amount of time, and that's fine, but, you know, I just, I just, I know what my state of mind is now, since I've been up since five o'clock, and I, you know, I just don't, I, I just don't want to discount, you know, uh, a conversation with these two people.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Either that, or have uh, been before this, meet at six o'clock, and do one at one meeting, and six on, on another, but then that still stretches it out, and we really do need to get these evaluations completed, yes.
Oh, Mayor, I mean, I, I also agree with, um, you know, Councilmember Wilcox, and, I mean, at the end of the night, I'm not so fresh, but, you know, again, I'm not here to, you know, if that's what people want to do, I'm flexible to whatever, um, I mean, I figure what would make sense, right, is that we would see if the, the, you know, employee that we're evaluating has any questions or comments, and then, you know, give obviously our, you know, council members and, and you, an opportunity if they wanted to, you know, discuss anything further, or answer questions, or, or talk about things, obviously, we'd have a, you know, time for that, and if there's not a big dialogue, great, if there is, that's, you know, great as well, um, so, I mean, I kind of prefer if it was before a meeting or on a separate night, but again, I can be, I'm flexible, so, um, you know, what, however people feel strongly, I'll, I'll make it work as an individual for myself.
I'm, um, I'm flexible too, I just don't, I agree that, uh, I would rather not do it after a, a council meeting, so if we want to do, take two different council meetings, that would be okay, or if we want to just do both on one um, a ni- night that we do not have council meetings. Five o'clock and six o'clock in the afternoon, or six o'clock and seven o'clock, so, I need to hear from council, though, because we've we keep going back and forth, let's, um.
I think, um, uh, Councilwoman Simmons made a pretty valid point, and I think Clerk Colunga said that he would accept it as it is, so, and I do think, uh, with council men, uh, with Cox has said honoring the space and time, so, I think an hour is well enough time to do one at a time, you know, um, I, I would vote, there was a vote that we do one prior to the other on two different council days, because I do think, like, Councilwoman Simmons said, it's easier, since the days are already blocked off, just to come a little early, um, I can't imagine it taking more than forty-five minutes per meeting, but that's just what I think, so, I'm, I'm open, but do we have to make a motion, or do we have to just agree?
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
I would like to make a motion that, on the date that council decides that we would do the evaluations, um, in two separate council meetings, starting with the clerk, and then with the city manager.
Support.
It's moved and supported discussion, Councilmember Simmons.
I was wondering just about clarifying that, um, well, I guess, would we just do the next two meetings?
April sixth and April twentieth.
Yep, there we go.
Okay, okay, and at six P M, because it, the motion didn't specify a time, but six P M, does that work, or, you know?
He said an hour ahead of, before the meeting.
Okay, sorry, got it, okay, per, some, that sounds good to me, from my perspective.
All right, any other, uh, questions, discussion on that motion?
So do I have to make a friendly amendment to say specifically, uh, we meet at six o'clock on, uh, April sixth and April twentieth, for these?
Uh, Mr. Halanga.
No, this doesn't actually even require a, a motion, so we can just. Six and the twentieth.
All right, thank you. Okay, wow, we got that done. Um, I'll just go on, since I have SimCOG, SimCOG update, uh, the general assembly is going to be on Thursday, so I will be attending, and I hope someone, some others, uh, register in eating. Councilmember Wilcox, and is your hand up?
Yeah, I had a question about that, because I signed up for, um, for sessions in the morning, and you said that it was like two different days, and it overlapped with the M M L conference, and I couldn't find any information about that, all I could find was the Thursday morning sessions, and then really nothing about the general assembly.
Oh, that, that is the general assembly, the sessions are part of the general assembly.
Okay, yeah, I just found two, two in- individual sessions that you had to sign up for.
That are on, that are on Thur- are on Thursday?
Thursday morning, there's two that you had to register for separately, and then if there was a general meeting, I didn't see that, but anyway.
Yeah, that's, I, I did, um, they did it different this year, you have to sign up for each i- of the sessions individually, but that whole day is general assembly day, so. They had some interesting, um, sessions that they're offering, so if anybody else wants to look, it's not too late, you can register even, uh, as far as I know, you can still register on Thursday morning, but they do have some interesting, uh, sessions this time, so. That's SimCOG. Washna Area Transportation.
Yeah, actually, um, we have a meeting tomorrow, so, um, maybe on the next meeting, I'll have something to report, but nothing new as of today.
Mr. Halanga.
Next item is Urban County.
Okay, I have nothing to report.
D D A.
Got a meeting on Thursday morning, we're gonna talk about, um, West Cross Streetlights and the twenty-twenty-one Summer Movie Series, uh, we're planning six drive-in movies, um, May through October.
Um, Friends of Rutherford Pool.
Uh, we met after, the day after the last meeting, um, there was discussion about opening the pool, uh, from the budget standpoint, and, uh, and also from the safety standpoint, and so, um, had a conversation or an email with, uh, Kimberly uh, Jones, uh, and Kathy Thorburn from the pool, who is the, the director of the staff for the pool. Um, there's really not, um, very good guidelines at this point in terms of pools, um, the county has has, uh, safety measures put in place for indoor pools, but they really haven't decided on what they're doing with the outdoor pools. Um, one of the things that was kind of fed into the, uh, my thoughts about the, uh, the special event was that, uh, in order for, um, these folks to open and have limited capacity, uh, there needs to be somebody besides the pool guards that is policing the, the distancing and the, um, the, yeah, so the, the safety measures, there has to be somebody completely separately hired to, to take care of that, and there's discussion about having that be um, an intern, uh, possibly through U of M or through Summer Works Programs, and things like that, so, they're looking at that, they're trying to figure out how to do this safely, uh, the, the official pool capacity is three hundred people, and everybody just laughed because they never allowed that to happen, so, we're talking, um, much lower density, and, um, just trying to figure out what that's gonna look like with, with some guidance from the county, but even the county doesn't know what's going on with that, so.
What's the pool's date, um, council member?
Uh, that's a good question, um, I'm, I'm not sure what that was, they, they, they talked about, um, you know, in the past, they have, they have opened before Labor Day for limited weekends, depending on the weather, um, but I think with the staffing issues and, and getting people, um, getting enough staff, and, and the other problem that they're having is, is having staff trained in classes for, for water safety. Um, so I think they're looking at, at a, a, a more condensed schedule, and, and it may be, uh, Memorial Day, but I'd have to check on that as well. But I, I know it's not gonna be commensurate with what they've done in the past, they've been open for a couple of weekends before Memorial Day in the past, and I don't think that's gonna be possible.
So that's like May.
Right, and, and that's also a cost thing, you know, it's just like with the, they're gonna take a hit on this, and they have to do extra fundraising to, to do this, but with the limited capacity, without being able to sell passes, and things like that, they're talking about shifts, and, you know, all these things, you know, so that you know, you can't just go and spend the entire day at the pool, you have a, a very limited time, there's turnover, there's, there's cleaning, there's all of that involved in it, so, it'll be a lower capacity, um, and they will certainly take a financial hit from doing that, but they really want to have it available, um, for continuity, because if you're closed two seasons in a row, then you kind of lose, lose that, but they're, they're uh, totally want to comply with, with, uh, guidance from the county health department too, so.
That's gonna be interesting.
Yeah, it, and, and.
No masks, nothing, just in the water.
Well, you know, they have to have masks while they're going through the building, and the building is bigger, and it's separated, and there's like family, you know, family shower rooms and things like that, and so there's, there's certain things built into renovations, but they're all very aware of that, and not, you know, not wanting to push the envelope and, and but still trying to, to make it possible, so.
I, I.
But I hear the, I hear the, the questioning in, uh, city manager's voice. Uh, and I have those same questions about just how, you know, safe is it going to be, you know, for people in the pool, even though, you know, it's gonna be limited, but there will be no mask, and I, 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 for May, you know, or June.
Right, and, and the, the idea of having classes where there are people in close proximity, I mean, they, they, you know, it's gonna be like, if you think about it in terms of restaurants, you know, if a family unit comes in and they stay together, that's one thing, and, and that's another thing that they discussed, is like, well, how do you know? You know, somebody shows up at the door with six people, how do you know who they are, you know, and, and that they're a family unit, but, um, you know, I, I, I don't think they're, they're there are still a lot of questions that haven't been answered, and, and that's where everybody in that process is, they're exploring those options, but, you know, the, the doubt that's in your mind is, is the doubt that's in their mind as well, so, trying to figure that out, they're just looking at possibilities at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. Council, next item on the agenda is council proposed business.
Okay, um, let's see. Councilmember Somerville.
I've got nothing, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Simmons.
Yeah, thanks, um, I think the only thing, um, I maybe just wanted to ask, um, thank you, city manager, for, um, following up on that neighbor complaint about that house with, I know there was some, um, violation issued, and I'm still perplexed about, what do we do about, kind of the barking dog issue, I do think, um, and I know you, you were asking the chief as well, you know, I, we've had this discussion before, and I've had other constituents, um, come to me about, you know, dogs off leashes, you know, almost, you know, being attacked, or almost being attacked, and then again, the barking dog issue, and it does feel like at some point, you know, do we need to bring that back under, you know, kind of our umbrella for some type of, you know, again, action ordinance enforcement, and I, I do like, you know, if we can prevent it, problem solve it, you know, and, and you know, if we're gonna activate kind of more community policing, some of that might have to be a little bit of that, but then also, you know, what are we doing, because basically, when people call, complain, or whatever, I mean, there's, there's kind of like no answer for them, and I, I feel like that doesn't seem like a great answer, that doesn't feel good to me, you know, as a, um, as a city official, and also as a citizen, like, you know, if people aren't, you know, if, if their dogs are nuisance, or they're a threat, or whatever, you know, somehow the owners need to be held accountable, whether, you know, so I don't know, I just, I, maybe that's a discussion to have, you know, further on, of like, what do we do with this, because, you know, I don't think it's. you know, I don't think it's effective calling the county, I don't think it's, you know, the Humane Society, I mean, they're going to respond to, I think, just if there's a dire situation with an animal, but meanwhile, you know, people are kind of miserable because their neighbor's dog is barking away and they have ignored their, you know, request to do something about it or, or whatnot. So anyway, just, just saying, I think we need to talk about that as, you know, is that, what do we, what do we want to do with that? It's quality of life thing often, so, anyway, so that's my thoughts.
Okay, I'm going to talk to Mr. Barr too and see if there's anything we can do. Um, I don't know if we could have some kind of ordinance, but we'll discuss it.
Okay, but, but thanks for your responsiveness, um, it was much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxon.
Um, I've got a couple of things. Um, there was a thread in Facebook uh, over the past couple of days about um, people wanting to establish a, a community garden at Candy King Park. And so I wanted to um, know where we would go with that. I mean, I can't think of any other, you know, there's, there's a community garden in Frog Island and I have no idea how that was established. I can't think of any other city park that has a community garden and this is not, you know, there.
Park Ridge Park.
Park Ridge has got a, so there were certainly uh, dissent um, within that, within that thread, people were like, you know, we like to park open, that's what it is, you know, but I just want to check on how we would, how how we would go about establishing that and, and what, what needs to happen to do that.
Okay, so um, Christopher, can you check on me and, or Joe, one of you guys?
Uh, actually, I, I can, I can answer it real quickly. The, the Parks and Rec Commission actually have guidelines to do that uh, through the Adopt a Park program, but uh, there, I think there's a special uh, um, community garden section to that. And so Bonnie at the, at the DPS will be able to help you with that process as she's the staff liaison for parks.
Okay. Um, I will check in with Bonnie then. Um, I want to give you an update on uh, Penn Dam. Um, their second round of funding for the D N R grant has been put in, that was uh, put in last, last Friday. Um, that included uh, basically, when the first uh, grant proposal was put in, um, there was uh, due to COVID, there was a, a reduction in the funding for that, and so that was about three fifths funded. And so this new one was put in for the remainder of that project that had been proposed in the first place. Um, there's a good indication that, that will get funded with that. There was an update to the, the public engagement um, plan for that. Um, uh, part of, part of the structure of that is there's a steering committee similar to the feasibility study in which um, you know, people from uh, it, City of Ypsilanti meet with uh, people from the townships and, and with here on River Watershed Council and that, that meeting took place as well. Um, Ken Schwartz was unable to make to the meeting, but Brenda Stumbo was there. Um, you know, it was a, you know, the representative from Limna Tech was there, people from Watershed Council, city manager, myself, Christopher Jacobs and Scott Sliger were there. Um, mostly providing information to, to the people in the township, the township representatives and Brenda Stumbo was, was uh, engaged in that, but it was mostly providing them information of uh, what needed to happen and what, what's proposed in the public engagement plan, so. Um, those things are going, moving along, um, had conversations with other people that uh, could have, could help us with the public engagement. Um, Christopher, we have two um, proposals for facilitators for the public meetings and Christopher, after a conversation with um, city manager, Christopher is putting out for another um, proposal, so we have at least three proposals for that. Um, and possibly four, in a conversation with Christopher, we came up with another person um, to do that, so. Um, those should be coming back. We should be having that conversation and then there's now going to be a monthly meeting uh, with the city manager, me, Christopher and uh, the city attorney, Mr. Barr, so. Um, so that we can have more direct uh, communication on a regular basis, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, was there anyone from Friends of Peninsula Park at that, me, included in that meeting that you just mentioned?
At the steering committee meeting? No. Um, you know, the, the, the officials from the townships were there um, as that, and the point of that, that uh, that committee is to kind of have thirty thousand foot oversight for, for the project. Um, and so the Friends of Penn Park will be engaged in a, in a separate way, so.
Okay. All right, was just asking, was wondering, okay, uh, Mr. uh, Jones Chance.
Uh, yes, on the uh, twenty-seventh, uh, community members around Park Ridge Park are doing a cleanup. Um, I'll be out there around eight with some other folks and uh, that's being uh, led by uh, Brian Foley, Anthony Williamson and John Brown, so uh, the community is going to have a cleanup day. Um, that's going to be the twenty-seventh, and uh, I did have a question um, about sort of large asset purchases and uh, this is mostly just because um, I haven't been through a budget yet and so I'm still pretty ignorant about the process. Um, so in the past been on council maybe like seven months, so in the past seven months, we've um, made three or approved three large vehicle purchases and I think they're all around the thirty-five thousand dollar mark. Um, my question is, and maybe we already do this, but um, I'm assuming we don't purchase that many every year, but if we do, uh, how do we stagger these large asset prices, uh, purchases so that um, they're not all they're not all reaching the end of their useful life at the same time? So for example, you know, three years from now, we might be buying more, you know.
We, we do have, we do have a um, vehicle replacement schedule. And um, we usually put it, you'll see this as a part of the budget process. We do have a spreadsheet where we, we uh, schedule them out so that they're not right behind each other, um, because we're having them pay into the motor pool ahead of time to pay for that vehicle. So what you're seeing is they've come up, you know, ready for their purchase and um, they're, they've been budgeted and approved. Andrew, Mr. Halanga.
Yeah, if I could clarify, the vehicle purchase on the consent agenda today was completely covered by insurance. The vehicle was totaled, so it wasn't a new purchase.
Okay, so really like to. But that, um, that, that explanation helps, so. Uh, I guess after budget time, I'll, I'll be a little less ignorant about it.
Anything else? No, I see you muted yourself. Okay, um, Councilmember Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna sum this up in sixty seconds if I can. Um, Y-PAC, we have our next meeting, uh, March twenty-fifth. I believe that's the first meeting where uh, the two new uh, but Chair and Vice Chair will be in their capacities, which would be a great thing. Um, so that's March twenty-fifth, next Thursday. Um, I believe, um, I want to know more about, I know there was a, two statements, it was read by Clerk Halanga about Larry Appany specifically noted a few ordinances and I would like to know about staff and writing, if those ordinance are up to date, if, if he's just blowing smoke with their concrete, and so we can, um, because he's been saying the same thing for some time and hasn't really uh, broken character, so I'm really interested in knowing if this is a ordinance thing and this is something that we can attest to or, or reinforce or just continue to ignore. Um, I want to mention something about um, Athena Johnson and she, she uh, vacated her seat for the D D A. Um, and that's a very diverse, powerful seat. I would want to know how we, uh, in, in time, what's the plan to re uh, seat someone in there with um, the business knowledge and support that Ms. Johnson has been given, uh, Mrs. Johnson has given to the D D A over the years, so. Um, and I've been getting, uh, I've got a contact or two from um, uh, constituents talking about the fee schedule for permits, um, um, parking permits mainly, and I know come budget season, we're going to be discussing those things and uh, I, I need more information on it and I will be continuing to talk to these constituents about it, um, but I think um, uh, Councilwoman Somerville had brought that up prior and I'm, I'm sure we're going to revisit it, so I want to get more information. And I, and I met with um, just a little bit, just talking with Economic Director Joe um, about just some wonderful things that potentially could benefit our city in the future, so it was good meeting with him in the prior week. And um, that's my council business for the day. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Yes, uh, I do not have anything tonight and I apologize for my absence um, for the last portion of the meeting.
Okay, we accept your apology. Thank you. All right, um, I um, I think I really kind of talked about some of the things that I was going to mention. We do have Mr. um, Barr is working on finishing up a um, resolution. Uh, I think he sent it to Mr. Ling of declaring uh, June nineteen, June nineteenth uh, city holiday. It will be on the, coming up on the April sixth agenda, uh, and it will be a holiday in perpetuity here in the city of Ypsilanti. Last week I attended the um, N L C Virtual Convention Cities Conference and um, it's usually held in D C and for the last probably five years I've gone in person. This year it was uh, virtual. I attended and in one of the sessions that I attended, several city mayors or council people and they, one was a clerk had commented on how their cities had adopted um, had declared that day, the nineteenth, a holiday in their city. So I came back and spoke to Mr. Barr about it and he said that we could and so he has prepared a resolution and will be coming before council at the next meeting on that. Um, that and the other thing that we uh, we talked about earlier and it was for discussion was the um, the calling of state of emergency, so those were the two main things that I had to bring before you tonight and um, just want to stop there. Communications from the city manager. Um, uh, I want to thank um, Councilmember Wilcoxon for the invitation to be a part of the steering committee. Um, I was very um, impressed. Um, Mr. Wilcoxon has really been doing a lot of work and um, he definitely had a timeline in place for um, moving that project, the removal along. And so I just wanted to tell him that I was um, I was impressed at that meeting. Um, and I learned a whole lot, so um, I'll be attending that meeting. And um, the fee schedule for Councilmember Morgan, we generally uh, visit the fee schedule right after we adopt our budget. Um, so I would um, ask you to get with Bonnie and Andrew, um, you know, as soon as possible so that we'll have those numbers ready um, on that fee schedule to come to council.
Thank you.
Also figure out what the revenue would look like with the new uh, versus what we have right now.
Okay.
And I think I'll let that be it too. Thank you. I thank you and back to you, Mr. Halanga.
Uh, council next item on the agenda, communications, there is only one communications indicating the departmental budget presentations which will be on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M. And then the next item is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Good night.
Support.
It's been moved. Thank you for the support. It's been moved and second. And I'd like to say that we um, made it before the be witching hour of eleven o'clock, so thank you all. Appreciate it. Everyone, stay safe, stay well. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.